Well, tonight's meeting, special meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. And given that we have a pretty full house and our clerk is in the audience for us to call the roll. Would the clerk please call the roll if you can? Here?
Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Wonderful. Well, we are extremely excited this evening to participate in collaboration with our District 20 delegation. This is an annual exercise that we do every year, but I don't want people to believe that this is the only time that we have to engage with our District 20 delegates. We are extremely fortunate in the city of Tacoma Park and I am always touting the hard-working D-20 team and all of the fantastic things that you do for our city. So the purpose of today's special meeting is to talk about priorities that the city has here from our District 20 delegation around the priorities that they have for the upcoming session. But to also hear from our residents and to provide our residents in the community with an opportunity to ask questions of our District 20 team and for them to hear your feedback as well. So I just want to welcome our delegates that are here right now. Delegate Wilkins, Janelle Wilkins is here. Delegate David Moon, as well as Delegate Laura Charcutian. And we are expecting Senator Will Smith and so we will welcome him when he arrives. So we're going to jump right into, we're going to start with public comments this evening. Just as a reminder, we're going to stick to the three-minute rule. But because we have another meeting, this council has a meeting after this one, a regular meeting, we are limiting the public comments to a total of 30 minutes. So if we do not have time to get to you, I'm pretty sure our delegates are more than welcome and more than happy to accept any comments that you have in writing. And so to kick us off, I would actually like to acknowledge our Youth Council for the City of Tacoma Park. If you all wouldn't mind standing up. Our Youth Council is such a critical committee within the city. They not only engage the youth, but they also hold us accountable. There have been a number of instances where our Youth Council has weighed in on actions of the city council. They do a lot in our community in terms of public service and so we are excited to have them here today. And I want to invite them up to share a little bit in terms of what they do and also any comments that they have for the District 20 team.
Good evening, City Council and delegate members. My name is Colleen Bond. I'm currently serving as the chairperson for this year's Tacoma Park Youth Council. I'll turn it over to the rest of them to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Isabel.
Hi, I'm Colby.
Hello, I'm Cody.
Hello, my name is Sophia Swornson. I'm part of Ward Three.
Hi, my name's Amnon and I live in Ward Two.
Hi, my name is Kirtika Ginsberg Strickler and I represent Ward Three.
Okay, so I'll also be mentioning the members that aren't currently here right now. We have first off Mahuli Agosi, Maryam Alsherif, Muhammad Michael, Tommy Carter, as well as Marilla Dos Santos. These members are also, they are very strong advocates for the city and they're just not present right now because they have a little bit more pressing matters. So the Youth Council is committed to supporting the youth in the city through service and advocacy at the city, county, and even state levels. Our first project, the Youth Council will assist the police department and volunteer fire department with their annual holiday tour drive. There are more than twice the regular number of recipients this year, so we encourage everyone to donate to the drive. We have taken the step to try and communicate with people at the community level and around the city as much as we can by reaching out to schools, elementary, high school. I've tried to reach out to MC, but that's slow. So any help that we could receive on that would be very appreciated. We are also planning to partner with the 12 local nonprofit film interviews that will run on TV, city TV, to help the word spread about their good work. So we feel as a council, this unanimous decision that the nonprofit organizations that are in the city aren't recognized enough, especially by the youth. So we've taken it upon ourselves to try and get them on air in order to spread awareness about them. And finally, the Youth Council would like to host a town hall event in the spring and we would be honored to include the members of both our City Council and members of the D-20 delegation in that event. So please reach out to us if any of you all are available. Thank you so much for the opportunity and what we're doing and we look forward to working with all of you. Good evening.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for coming out and the service that you all are providing. And I just want to take creative license for one minute. Would the District 20 team be willing to take a photo with the Youth Council? All right, come on stage. Well, that was a great kickoff. Do we have any other public comments for our District 20 team this evening? Any public comments? Arthur, are you gonna, okay.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue, Ward Four. Thanks to all of you for the work you do. That work is made harder by our changed national situation. It is also made simpler because for both city and state officials, there can only be one priority in 2026, countering the effects of federal fascism. Black scholars have taught us that in dealing with centuries of ongoing racism, it's not enough to be non-racist, we get to be anti-racist. Similarly, in the current situation, it's not enough to be non-fascist, we get to be anti-fascist. Of course, that applies to what you as officials do. The bills you introduce, the votes you cast, the budgets you adopt, the voting districts you redraw. Above and beyond that, it applies to how you do it. The current moment calls for maximum representative democracy. That means having public comments at every meeting, even if the law doesn't require it. It means having public comments at every meeting, especially if the law does require it. Most importantly, it means governing openly and transparently. Whether it be audits of past events, evaluations, or consideration of legal matters, your best way forward is this. If you cannot do it in public, simply do not do it. I hope you will all resolve for the new year to be anti-fascist and I hope you will keep those resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments for the District 20 team? See none. And just want to check with the clerk that we don't have any virtual commenters this evening. Wonderful. Okay, well, we're going to, just to remind my colleagues about the process. The City Council has passed a resolution that outlines our legislative priorities for the next session. And so what we're hoping to do is just to spend a few minutes walking you all through our priorities. And also open the floor a little bit for conversation. We'll then turn things over to the District 20 team to talk about some of the priorities that you have and ways in which the City of Tacoma Park, its residents, and the City Council can support you. So with that... And just for our members, District 20, we have a new setup. So all you have to do to speak is to push the button with the person. Your light will turn red. To turn it off, just hit that button again and it will turn off and your mic will be, your mic will off. I apologize, I should have noted that earlier. So we're going to kick things off with a big thank you to the District 20 team. You provided funding for us during the last session in support of our Public Works building design. And that is really instrumental in order to help us address the first step towards modernizing our Public Works facilities. So thank you very much for that. And we also want to do a big shout out in terms of us being able to kick off the stop sign camera pilot. It is something that I know a number of our residents are very, very, very excited about. And we know that it was in large part to, due to, to your hard work. I know Delegate Charcutian really worked to get us in there and we're very appreciative of the work that you all have been doing to not only advocate for funding, advocate for laws that align with our values as a community, but also when we come to you with an ask, you figure out creative ways to get that thing done. So we just want to say, start off by saying thank you very much. Just as a reminder, so every year, the City Council works to identify priorities for the city. And these are goals that we set out as a council to try to achieve. And this year's priorities related to advancing a community of safety and belonging. Fiscally sustainable government, really trying to make sure that we're able to bring in the revenues necessary to provide the valuable services that so many of our residents rely on. Environmentally, sustainable community, really trying to make sure that we're upholding our values as a sustainable community and that we're being innovative in terms of the work that we do to advance our climate goals. We're also working to make sure that we're engaged, responsive, and have a service-oriented government and really trying to think through processes to make sure that we're able to reach those residents within our community that are in need and providing the infrastructure necessary to address the things that are needed within our community. And then lastly, but definitely not least, we have a priority for advancing housing community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. And we have been working to work on policies that are designed to not only protect our tenants, but also open the door for opportunities for housing creation within our city. Because we recognize that the entire state, the region, the country is in a housing shortage and we want to make sure that we're able to provide those types of opportunities to the residents in the City of Tacoma Park. And so with that, I'm going to turn things over to Councilmember Waselek, who will talk through our housing and social service support items.
Thank you. Yeah, so under this umbrella of housing and social service support, we want to lift up three legislative priorities. we want to lift up, uh, three legislative priorities. One is the good cause eviction legislation. Requiring landlords to provide a legitimate reason for eviction protects low-wage renters from sudden displacement and helps stabilize our community. So I know, I know there's been a lot of work on this front, so we're hoping that it can keep going and cross the finish line. Uh, two, uh, expanding, expanded SNAP support. Uh, with federal funding being so uncertain, broadening SNAP access and programs like market money ensures families can afford healthy food, reducing hunger in our city. And three, uh, preserving, uh, comprehensive care for, uh, gender-affirming care within Medicaid. So this would help our transgender and non-binary residents that despite federal cuts, we can affirm our commitment to health equity and the dignity of all. So collectively, uh, these address fundamental needs, housing security, food access, and inclusive healthcare. Advancing them creates a safer, healthier, and more equitable city for every resident, so. And now I will pass the discussion to Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you, Councilmember Weslech. Um, I'd like to discuss the, our city's legislative priorities related to immigrant protections and community safety, an area that I know all of you have done a lot of work on over the years. Um, Tacoma Park, as you know, has seen an increase in federal immigration enforcement activity as many places across the state, making those protections even more critical for our own residents here. Pro- prohibiting local law enforcement's participation in ICE's 287G program is essential, as I know you know, for building trust between immigrant communities and police, ensuring that public safety and not immigration enforcement will remain our focus. But we also need to safeguard Maryland's residents' personal data by requiring a valid court-issued warrant before federal immigration authorities can access sensitive information. Supporting the reintroduction of SB 977 will help protect privacy and uphold the rule of law. And now I'm gonna ca-, uh, pass it over to Councilmember Landman to speak about the third bullet on this slide.
Yeah, thank you very much. Additionally, we need greater transparency during federal enforcement actions. Officers should not be wearing masks, and they really need to be displaying visible identification and body cameras, uh, properly the way our officers do when they engage in their enforcement activities. And vehicles that are being used here in the city need to have proper license plates. These measures are going to ensure accountability, and they're gonna protect the rights of all residents in light of recent enforcement activity in Tacoma Park, and they are gonna protect our officers, uh, vis a vis the activities of federal, uh, law enforcement. Passing these policies are going to strengthen community trust, and they will help to keep Maryland safe and a welcoming place for everyone. Let me see, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Schlegel to talk about municipal revenue issues next. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, you know, the city, along with other municipalities in the state, we're, we're really looking for support in this upcoming session to modernize how we can raise revenue. And we really need more options, like allowing local sales taxes and protecting important sources like highway user revenues that'll help us as Tacoma Park just remain financially stable and responsive to the community needs. Um, and the city, we're also urging your support tonight for legislation that would let cities charge utilities for using our local rights-of-way. Um, and that also would be, um, something that would, we'd like to tie into that, a clear process for working with state highway authorities and utility companies. Whenever those utility facilities need to be dug up, moved, adjusted, um, these changes will give us the flexibility and the resources needed to fund our vital services and maintain our infrastructure. So I'm gonna turn the discussion over to Councilmember Gilbert next.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. I'm related to transportation and Vision Zero. Um, we would like to allow local authorities to, to lower speed limits without a traffic study. Um, as was mentioned earlier, the city appreciates all the work that Delegate 20 has done to help advance Vision Zero goals throughout the state. The city of Tacoma Park supported Housing Bill 612, which would allow local authorities in Montgomery County to lower speed limits on local roads without requiring a costly traffic study. This change is vital for enhancing safety in our densely populated residential neighborhoods where speeding poses risks to pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. We would also encourage continued support in this area. Um, next I'll pass the discussion to Councilmember Dubala, who will discuss our environmental priorities.
Thank you. So, as I'm sure it doesn't surprise you, the city continues to address our climate and chan-, climate change and sustainability goals and responsibilities. The question is, what's the legislative issues this year? And, um, we, we supported the Renew Act last year, and, uh, we supported the amended act to do a justice study, and that is something that's high on our list. Uh, we also want to continue talking about what, like, what your legislative priorities will be and support you in particular bills that you think are important. But since we are, you know, just starting out the session, this is where we are right now. And there are some bills that we individually support that were up last year and will be up again this year, but for the focus on the city, what's the impacts on the city, this was the one that came to the, to the top of the list for now. Uh, and now I'm gonna kick it back to the mayor for the, for the big, big bu-, reveal here.
I'm gonna beg.
She's good, she's good.
Very convincing. Um, so, uh, so we are asking for your support again, um, in terms of a legislative bond. Um, we are working to, um, improve the bike trail, pedestrian trails throughout our city. Um, the Metropolitan Branch Trail is one, um, major project that will improve bicycle and pedestrian safety um, by improving the connectivity between Washington DC and Silver Spring. So DC is working on, on their trail, um, the Silver Spring is working on theirs, and, and we're this piece in the middle that if we are able to be successful in, um, moving forward, um, with improvements on our trail, it'll make things more seamless across, um, uh, all, all of these different jurisdictions. Um, we're requesting 500,000, but if you can give us more, we'll take it. We recognize, um, that this is gonna be a very hard, um, session in, um, fiscally. Um, but it is, it is a, a, a couple of million dollars total for the project to be done. We've done all of the design work, now we're just trying to work towards, um, securing enough resources to start phasing in construction. Um, one thing that I will say that has been important for, for us and has been a, a challenge for us, and I know, um, this sometimes comes up a lot, why are you not applying for Department of Transportation funds or other funds that may be available federally, um, to help support these types of initiatives? What we are seeing at a federal level is that there are, um, terms and conditions that are being included in these grant, um, in these grant opportunities that do not align, um, with the values that we have as a city. And I think one of the things that will be very important for, um, for, uh, folks in Annapolis and, and for District 20 and, and for all of us, um, is to try to come up with alternatives to what used to be federal funding sources for, um, communities that are not willing to give up DEI, they're not willing to, um, no longer call themselves a sanctuary city or a community of belonging. And that just means we have to be extremely creative in terms of how we're able to, um, fund these very important projects. Um, and so this is just one. Um, in the future, we're hoping to also, um, request funding for the New Hampshire Ave Bike Ways Project. Um, that project is designed to, um, create bike lanes going up New Hampshire Avenue. It will provide some really important, um, connections between DC, um, and the Purple Line, um, that is at University Boulevard, the Tacoma Langley Station. Um, and so it'll be really important to make sure that we're able to get cars off the road by improving the connectivity, um, for pedestrians and bikers. And lastly, um, we will continue, uh, uh, this is new, um, because I think it's important for folks to understand that we work with you all all the time, and I just want to give a kudo to your staff, like, your staff is amazing as well. Um, there's a number of instances where we need technical assistance, um, and your support, and, uh, want to make sure that we're able to continue to receive that. Um, I know that we've engaged with you all in terms of, uh, recovery of loss for utility-related property damage. I know we've reached out in terms of, um, uh, things that we've experienced within the city, but also our residents, um, in terms of some Pepco power surge, um, um, challenges. Um, WSSC site plan review processes and, and how we can kind of move those along, particularly as it relates to some of our, our, our businesses and, and getting those, um, processes in order. Um, and then also, uh, continuing to, um, see how we can use some flexibility in terms of sensitive locations identification. We know, um, that a number of our residents are not going to important food distribution locations out of fear of, um, ICE or immigration enforcement happening while they're at the, um, food distribution locations. So we will be looking to, to work with you all to just make sure that we're, we have some authorities to be able to put some additional mechanisms in place to protect those locations, and also to consider parking lots and parks in these open air spaces within the city to be sensitive or private locations as well, given that we, um, often do a lot of services for our community in open air spaces at festivals, at parks. We're doing, um, flu shots, COVID vaccinations, food distributions, lots of things where we want everyone in our community to be able to participate regardless of their immigration status. We don't want them to be afraid there's gonna be ICE immigration that's gonna happen because we have a festival where they can get access to certain resources. So with that, I know that we've talked a lot. Um, we all just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do, um, and want to answer any questions that you have, or, um, also kick things over to you all to talk about some of the priorities that you have coming up in the session.
Madam? Well, everybody's thinking about what they won't say.
Who's gonna go first?
Yeah. Thank you for hanging in there, all four of you, and moving into leadership. Because it's one thing to have a very responsive delegation, and that's great, and it's a great thing to have a team. And it, and then the idea that we also have some real firepower as a, as in Annapolis because of the positions you've moved into is really special. So I, on behalf of the council, I just wanted to thank you for that. Because I know that's a whole nother layer.
All right, so who would like to kick us off? I can see when you, when you hit your button, I can see who hit it first in an order, and I can call on you in order if that would be helpful.
Senator Smith.
I appreciate that.
All right.
Hey, well, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Will Smith. I'm the state senator here for Silver Spring Tacoma Park. It's a pleasure to be here with you all. Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you all for hosting us. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, also, thank you to the, the District 20 team. Uh, Cindy, you are absolutely right. Um, it is one thing to, to get yourself into office and then to keep all your morals, keep your values, but then there's another thing to get yourself into a position of influence to make sure that you can, uh, have influence over legislation, to make sure that you can represent your values and your constituents in an effective manner. And I hope you all know that the District 20 team is, I think, one of, not only the most effective, but the most influential team, uh, in Annapolis. You, you know, Delegate Janelle Wilkins is chair of the, the Black Caucus, which is one of the largest, if not the largest, Black Caucus in the United States. Uh, David Moon is the majority leader of the House of Delegates, um, in, in, uh, in Maryland here. And Delegate Laura Charcutian, no one is more knowledgeable about energy and food assistance in the state of Maryland. Um, I, I talk to people, experts from across the country, and your name always comes up when you talk about energy and, and assistance. So like, you just have an outsized influence in policy, so Cindy, I want to thank you for that. Um, I, I, look, I've got a, your, your agenda that you've put forward, uh, tonight actually largely aligns. A lot of the, uh, topics were on my list of things to kind of present to you tonight as well, so. I don't know, Madam Mayor, do you want us to go into that, and then?
Yeah.
I'll be very quick.
I think that'll be great.
Okay, excellent. So, uh, I, I, I'm chair of the Judicial Proceedings Committee, that's the legal committee in Maryland. So that's, uh, it's got jurisdiction over all the criminal law, but all the civil law, all the tort law, um, and also housing and transportation. So it's a, a, a large portfolio. So a lot of what we've discussed already tonight falls under our purview. Um, uh, my number one priority, um, going into session, or priorities, I should say, one is for juvenile justice reform, youth charges adults. Um, in Maryland, we charge more youths as adults than any other state per capita than Alabama. Uh, nine out of 10 are children of color, 10, eight out of 10 are black children. It costs, if you put a child into the adult system, it costs, uh, $1,500 a day. We're spending about $150,000 on that process. When you put them in the adult system, it takes 180 days average to adjudicate those cases. That costs our state 17 to 19 million dollars, uh, every year. When you're in that adult system, you're not getting access to school or services. Um, so we're just doing it wrong. If you were to apply that lens to any other element of government or anything in the private sector, you say, fix these inefficiencies. But I'll add another layer of it, is that it's actually the more humane thing to do. Uh, but it's also a public safety bill, because you're gonna get better public safety outcomes. Oh, and by the way, uh, when you put a youth in an adult facility and you don't adhere to some of the federal requirements for sight and sound separation, you do some irreparable harm to that youth. And we're violating state, we're violating federal law every day in Maryland. In fact, Maryland is so much of an outlier in that regard that in terms of the national data that's kept, Maryland is excluded because we're such an outlier in terms of the infractions. So I just, that's, that's a real big piece of, of juvenile justice or criminal justice reform that I'd like to, uh, to move forward with, uh, next year. And I think we've built some really good momentum, uh, in this interim, and I, I'm very, very positive on the outlook on that. For immigration, all three pieces of legislation that were, um, brought up, uh, in terms of the 287G program, the masking, and then also data protection are, are priorities of ours. The Senate President has also come out early and, in support of all three of those measures. In Maryland, you'll, you know that we have a 287G program. Eight jurisdictions currently have a 287G program. There are three types of 287G program. One is the jail enforcement model, which is what we have here, uh, in Maryland. We also have, uh, something called the warrant officer service model. And then there's something called, uh, the field enforcement or task force model. We don't have that in Maryland. Uh, David Moon and I made sure that that would never come to Maryland a couple of years ago. Um, eight jurisdictions, like I said, have it. Um, three have the warrant, uh, sir, three have the jail enforcement model. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna put forth a piece of legislation that says Maryland will be disentangled from that process. So we're gonna get rid of 287G, uh, in Maryland, uh, as a top priority for immigration. Also masking, making sure those are clearly identifiable, the cars, make sure you have your name, that, uh, no masks that are covering up your identity, making sure that you clearly present yourself as an ICE official when you're, uh, interfacing with our residents in the state of Maryland. And then also data privacy. I don't want to go on too long, but data privacy is actually a really big deal. Um, we have passed legislation that cabins are MVA data, or licensed data from a request for the purpose of immigration enforcement, and said if you do that, if you request it, you've gotta, you can't do it, and if, if you, if you, it's gotta be under the penalty of perjury, so you've gotta have an attestation. That does not, however, cover third-party data brokers. So once that information is sucked out and gone to a private entity, and if ICE wants to engage that private entity, that's a whole nother story. And so we've got to figure out how to, how to make sure that we protect that information as well in Maryland. Um, housing, good cause eviction, that bill, um, we put in an amendment there that I know a lot of folks were not, uh, happy about. Um, I'm, I, I've said this again, I'm, I'm very confident we're gonna pass that legislation out of the Senate. The question that I would like to engage on, and this is what, and I don't, we'll get into detail on this a little bit later because I know it'll take too much time. Um, I understand that no one wants to, something called vacancy control that we have here in Maryland, uh, in Montgomery County, we have something, rent, rent control in, in Montgomery County. We have both of those things in Montgomery County. Um, we do need to have a serious discussion about what environment we're creating for the development of new housing. We have a 96,000-unit shortage in Maryland. Um, you, you saw reports that the average age of a first-time homebuyer now is 40. Um, the, we are experiencing outmigration in Maryland. That, um, people from 20 to my age are leaving because they can't afford here, to live here. That's the number one reason. So they'd rather live in, uh, in Pennsylvania, Delaware, West Virginia, commute into Maryland so that they can afford their home. Um, and so we've got to do something about housing, and that is zoning and creating an environment that, that, uh, people that are creating affordable housing, I'm not talking about Jared Kushner people, I'm talking about people that are interested in creating affordable housing, want to come here. I think you have to open conversation with that. Good cause eviction, um, does not, does not deter people from coming in. It doesn't. It doesn't. I mean, I don't, so, and I think it's a very good policy to put forward. Um, when layered on top of everything else, I think you all have to have an open conversation. I'm happy to let the local jurisdictions do that. Um, and so we'll be moving forward with that legislation with an understanding that I want to make sure that folks are wide-eyed when we're engaging in hous-, housing policy at the county and the municipal level, and understanding what type of environment you're creating for the creation of new housing. And so that's it. I'll, I'll be quick.
I just want to ask one clarifying question, Senator Smith. So does that mean that the Senate will be working towards moving good cause without the, the vacancy control amendment?
Yeah, so, and, and this, that's, that's the end, that's, thank you for that clarifying question. So the, with the way that I have drafted the bill as of yet is with, it mimics what we have in Montgomery County. And so basically what we have in Montgomery County, we have vacancy control and you have, uh, rent control. In vacancy control in Montgomery County, and this gets kind of wonky, but in- In vacancy control in Montgomery County, and this gets kind of wonky, but in vacancy control, you basically cannot, when someone leaves a unit, you can't put that unit back on the market at market rate. It has to be lowered down. It has to be cabined to either what the increase has been allowed for the county. So in Montgomery County, let's say you go up 3.5% every year. You cannot put that mark that unit back on the market any more than the allowable amount. So if what you think in Montgomery County is working and you think is good, and I thought was well thought out, then that's what I have it mimicking right now. That's what Montgomery County has. That's close to what Prince George's County has. These are only two jurisdictions that have both vacancy control and rent control. It's enabling legislation, so that creates some framework of a guardrail. But that's what I have here. So if you like what you have here in Montgomery County, that's what, right now, the draft legislation has in it. Opened up more conversation about that, but I've had several conversations with residents across our district the entire the entire interim, and I'm very much committed to making sure that we pass this legislation.
Thank you, and definitely look forward to reviewing the legislation. You know, I do think that what passed the House was was spot on in terms of what the city needs. So it would be helpful to get a better understanding of of that vacancy control-related amendment based on the Montgomery County Montgomery County's rent stabilization law is, you know, just on the surface, I just want to keep it clean and just keep good cause is good cause, and the version that came out of the House would be ideal.
I think, I mean, I would ask yourself, if you supported what we have in Montgomery County, if you supported the efforts in the county council, and you provided testimony for that, then I think, you know, it aligns perfectly with that prior support.
Delegate Wilkins.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and I want to thank the City Council for inviting us. Once again, I always enjoy us coming together, the City Council and the District 20 legislators, because so much of what we do together really impacts the residents, and the more that we can work together and have shared priorities and shared conversation is for the betterment of our communities. So thank you for the invitation and thank you for your leadership in our community. Again, I am Delegate Janelle Wilkins. I represent this district along with this dynamic team of the Silver Spring Tacoma Park and White Oak areas. I serve on the Ways and Means Committee, which deals with K through 12 education, gaming, taxes, and also election law and voting rights. So those are the subject matters that come to the Ways and Means Committee. I also serve as the Chair of the Legislative Black Caucus of Maryland, which is the largest Black Caucus in the country at 67 members. So those are all of the black members of the House and the Senate, of which Senator Smith is also a member. And so I spend a lot of time leading the caucus and also on those areas of topic and issues of legislation when it comes to the Maryland General Assembly and the Ways and Means Committee. I wanted to first start by commenting on the really strong priorities that the council has put forth. I know you worked hard on them and want to make sure that as much as possible I share some feedback. I'll save good cause evictions to last. Around around SNAP, I think the Majority Leader is likely going to talk a lot about that. But we know that we have a huge burden on our state coming from the federal cuts when it comes to SNAP benefits. And we have a lot of work on our hands to figure out how the state is able to cover as much of that as possible. We had the fire drill on that issue recently, unfortunately, and we did have to utilize our reserve funds, our rainy day funds in order to fund SNAP for for those who need it when it ran out. That's something that we're committed to, but I do have to caution us that with everything going on at the federal level, we do have finite resources in the state of Maryland, and we're actually already heading into another budget deficit situation due to the current federal actions, due to job layoffs. When people are laid off, it's not only detrimental to their communities, our families who are impacted, but also to the state of Maryland when it comes to those revenues. And so the layoffs and the number of federal actions that have taken place have put us at a on track for a deficit again. So those SNAP benefits are a challenge. Gender-affirming care, absolutely. The Renew Act is is something that we all strongly supported, the Legislative Black Caucus of Maryland formally supported as well. And we are pushing for an override of the veto of that legislation. So we do support the Renew Act. Sensitive locations legislation was my bill that passed, and that bill helps to make sure that when the president came into power, one of his first actions was to rescind longtime federal guidance that said that places that are sensitive, like the place that we're in now, our libraries, our schools and other areas, that those would be very much off-bound when it comes to federal immigration enforcement. Unfortunately, that was rescinded on day one. So what we did in Maryland through my legislation was to put forward a Maryland Sensitive Locations Act to say that in Maryland, these locations are considered sensitive and that we're relying on our Attorney General to make sure that we understand our rights and responsibilities around enforcement in those areas and that we as a state are not participating in any way around enforcement when it comes to those sensitive locations. So I understand there's interest in expanding those locations, and absolutely, we will take a look at that to look into expanding the additional places that should be considered sensitive locations. I've actually already signed on to the ICE mask legislation. And that bill is really important to make sure that we unmask ICE and that they have accountability. If you are in our communities terrorizing our communities, show your face. And we should be able to see who is conducting the ICE enforcement. Our police officers are not masked, and ICE should not be masked either. So I did sign on to co-sponsor that bill. It's being introduced by Delegate Nicole Williams. It sounds like the Senate may also have a similar effort and looking forward to supporting that along with the 287G legislation, which I was proud to vote for twice in the House in the 2025 legislative session. And we we hope that we'll get that to full passage in the 2026 session. Now, on the topic of the good cause eviction legislation, I want to deeply thank the City Council for all of your support on that bill over the years. It has been a long ride around good cause. And to make sure the public understands good cause evictions, this bill deals with evictions at the end of a lease. So when your landlord comes to you and has that decision at the end of your lease around to renew or not renew, it requires that a justifiable reason has to be provided. And when we're talking about housing affordability, having people who are following the rules and paying their rent able to stay in their homes. They have a home that they can afford and they are paying for, and they're following those rules that they are not evicted for no reason at all. That's what that bill is about. It's an eviction bill. And so I think that what I would caution, whether it's the council, the general public, any drafts of the bill, that that bill is about evictions. Expanding it to include conversations around vacancy control or conversations around rent stabilization and us as a state telling the city how to do their rent stabilization or the counties how to do theirs to me is unacceptable. We should keep the bill focused in on the topic at hand, which is around evictions. And so any additional provisions that deal with other topics I think would be unacceptable as the sponsor of that legislation. So I'd like to caution the public around expanding the topics of that legislation and keep us focused on the issue of evictions, which is a huge and challenging issue in our community. I do have another housing bill that I am introducing for the first time this legislative session. And this one deals with very egregious properties. And I'm talking about the properties that have the constant citations from the county or the city around mold, rodents, very unsafe, very unhealthy. And I have a particular property in this district in mind that I will not call out here on the dais, but some may know who I'm referring to. And what this bill is going to do is create state intervention. A lot of times, the county and the city, they're doing everything they can. They are looking at these properties. They're investigating. They're putting forth citations. And guess what? These property managers are paying the citations and still having terrible living standards for our residents. Something has to happen. There has to be state intervention. So this bill will expand the powers of the Maryland Department of Housing, which is DHCD, to be able to intervene. I'm talking legal interventions. So we will go to court if we must. We'll get binding orders. We will get injunctions. We will make sure that these egregious actors, I'm talking about the worst of the worst, not our, you know, everyday smaller challenges, to make sure that as a state we are intervening and taking really strong action. So I'm looking forward to introducing that bill as well for the first time. Senator Shanika Henson will be the Senate sponsor on that bill. And since I have spoken for a little while now, I will hold my other bills for further discussion. But thank you again, everyone, for being here. Thank you for your partnership, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the conversation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Delegate Moon.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Delegate David Moon here, and I want to actually just start, some of them might still be left here, but thank the Youth Council for coming out tonight. And being really a large chunk of the crowd, actually, of the participants today were the Youth Council participants. And so I will return the favor by taking them up on their ask for us to do a youth town hall later in the coming spring. And for the one gentleman that testified as to wanting us to to set our eyes on sort of stopping the creeping authoritarianism that we're seeing, I will say, I will talk a little bit about two of those priorities, some of which have been touched upon tonight. But it seems to me that the city's asks of us this year are also in line with stopping that same creeping authoritarianism. So I think we're, at least from the government you have assembled here, folks seem to be coming from the same point and trying to work on the same thing. So how how does that fighting that authoritarianism materialize for me as I look out at the coming year? You've heard a lot about immigration. I just want to say two things, you know, one, very clearly, the 287 issue. I don't like acronyms and funny names like that. We're talking about local police in Maryland becoming ICE agents and helping with the deportations. Currently, that's legal. Last year, our last session in the Maryland House, we voted to end and ban counties and local police from doing that. And it sounds like this year the Senate's going to also pass this legislation. So that is a it's a huge step forward that took literally years since the first Trump administration that people were asking for us to take this step, and it seems like it's teed up that we're finally going to do it. On the masking issue, I also, like my colleagues, support taking action on this. I do want to warn everybody. I fully expect the federal government not to comply with laws that we pass trying to regulate ICE in this manner. We actually passed this past year a law saying you got to call the local police and let them know in advance when you're doing an enforcement action. Just so you know, they're supposed to call the Tacoma Park Police and let them know when they're doing an enforcement action. But I do believe that Maryland law is being treated as toilet paper. So at a minimum, one of the things we're cooking on the House Judiciary Committee is a bill to use all of the law enforcement technology you've heard about, license plate scanners, cell phone, tower pings, facial recognition technology and social media scanning in order to at least develop a data profile of the phones, cars, and identifying information of the officers who were on site for these enforcement actions so that we could preserve it should it be needed at a future date in court. So keep your eyes on that fancy new proposal. The other big one that, you know, the city's got a request for revenue, and my colleagues have mentioned that we're having money problems, very frankly. As you can imagine, the federal layoffs are hurting our bottom line, and it's not just the layoffs. It's the grants, the science grants, the research grants. A lot of that flows through Maryland and District 20. You know, FDA, NOAA, these are facilities headquartered in District 20 where we are, and they've been gouged. So we are now staring at, and we already just did a huge round of revenues and budget cuts this year to the tune of billions. And we still, because of these actions, are going to end up with this coming year projected to be minus 1.4 billion. And I do believe the worst of the hits to our state economy have not even materialized yet. They are yet to come. So I want to be clear on that. It likely means, no matter what we do, in the coming year, we are cutting things. So that's the very, very unfortunate place we are at, and we've got to live within our means. But how does this relate to fascism? I do believe the state economy and our local economy is facing a full-frontal assault right now from the federal government. And much as people have been asking us for a long time to diversify our revenue sources and economy, I think the time has come that we have no choice. And at a minimum, I do think we can kill two birds with one stone by figuring out where we can put housing and job growth in order to backfill because we're currently also in a situation where the state has had flat or shrinking population growth rates basically since COVID. And it's an alarming warning sign that we are going to be asking fewer people, fewer taxpayers to foot the bill for greater and greater needs with fewer and fewer federal support. So we're going to all have to figure this out and get on with the mission of becoming less reliant on the federal government. Again, especially as it comes with more and more authoritarian demands and conditions on federal funding, at least for the next two to four years. And that leads me to my last point about fighting authoritarianism with every tool at our disposal. I know it's an unpopular topic among some, and there are some disagreements about this, but we are very much in the throes of a conversation about redistricting, elections, and all sorts of other rules. And I just cannot stop but see these two conversations as one and the same. The SNAP cuts that we're trying to stop, the ACA premium increases that we're trying to stop, the gouging of democracy with Trump running around, asking state after state to change the lines on them right now, and the attack on our federal workforce, all illegal, by the way. All of these things, I think, will eventually be found illegal. But I'm all in for taking a whack at the growing redistricting battle and throwing Maryland in, at least for this two-year cycle, to be able to join that fight. I wish that's not where we were, but as the one question that was asked to frame this whole conversation tonight, it's about authoritarianism. And everything else that we're talking about is shaded by that, and I would just be lying if I didn't put that right up front. So thank you, sir, for coming out to ask us about what we talk about tonight in that context. So that's unfortunately just a taste of some of the challenges that we're facing. But on to the good news and the easier stuff. We would be thrilled to put in a $500,000 bond request for the Metropolitan Branch Trail and try to get some local funds flowing back to our Local District 20 community. And with that, I will turn it over to my learned colleague Delegate Laura Charkodyan.
Well, thank you. I like bad and cleanup. I'm so proud of the District 20 team and so proud to be a member of it. And our values align so much, and so we support a lot of the same things. It's an honor to be here. Thank you to the City Council. Thank you to the mayor for hosting us again, and thanks for all of your ongoing partnership. It's really been a pleasure working with you as a council, but also each and every one of you have had a chance to do different kinds of projects and events and so on in the community. So look forward to continuing that. I will try to comment first on sort of your big picture priorities and then and then add a few things to them. So in terms of immigration, we've we've touched on a lot of the pieces. I just want to mention two other things. So the data privacy bill is was my bill, is my bill. I'll be bringing that back, and we'll be working on addressing some of the challenges that we faced last year at the end of session that kept it from going through. I'm also doing some work on some of the ICE flights. So it's a really tricky area because most of the jurisdiction is the Federal Aviation Administration. But there are jurisdictional areas like refueling, which is done by a fixed-based operator who is under the jurisdiction of the state of Maryland. And so we have the opportunity, for example, to put into place aviation safety rules that are such that if there's anybody who is in restraints on a plane, then it can't be refueled until they're removed and put in another safe place so that the plane can be refueled. And so that sort of is fully within our jurisdiction. Similarly, some of the health issues and requiring the compilation of health information about the people on board in case there's an emergency and they need to be served in Maryland and all of that, which would need to be, you know, sort of documents. in Maryland, and all of that, which would need to be, you know, sort of documents that would need to be signed by the people flying those planes or responsible for those planes, which create another set of records that, to Delegate Moon's point about the records that we do need to be compiling for the possibility of future prosecution, either in the near future or in different times. Related to that, I also think that we need to be using every tool in the toolbox, even the ones that are a little bit challenging or the ones that may be challenged. And so there's a movement amongst several legislators across the country that is being called the universal constitutional remedy, which sort of uses an interesting angle on some of the constitutional approaches to create a civil right of action in the state of Maryland against federal agents who violate the U.S. Constitution. And it's sort of a tricky line to walk, but it's one that has a good bit of legal scholarship defending it. And so I think it's one that we need to take a crack at in the state, and so I'll be bringing that bill and see how far we can get that. And then also, related to the anti-fascism, a bill that I'm still in the process of working on, but really calling into question Maryland's procurement relationship with any company that also has a procurement relationship that is actively violating people's civil rights, their human rights, their constitutional rights. And so, you know, if a company is actively engaged in violation of people's human rights and civil rights, that company is liable on some level, and it makes it a less financially sound investment, it makes it a less financially sound company. And so we really need to question Maryland's relationship, fiduciary relationships with those companies. And so it's not clear exactly what this is gonna look like in terms of the procurement process, I'm working out the details with attorneys, but it sort of falls in this category of the fact that we really need at this point to be thinking way outside the box and to be pushing some limits, and even to be willing to put forward legislation that very well will be challenged in court and be willing to fight for that, because we're not, you know, it's not normal times, there's nothing normal about these times, and we need to be adding tools to the toolbox, bringing in new tools, and these are some of the ones we're working with, and I think you're gonna continue to see some of this sort of creative problem solving. So related to climate and energy, I want to highlight two things. One is, you know, we're still looking at the energy affordability issue. Last year, we made some progress on energy affordability. It's a challenging issue because it involves so many complex components that create high electricity bills. You know, all of them can be tracked to corporate greed, frankly, but it takes a while to change rate-making structures. We changed rate-making structures last year, it takes a little while for that to show up on people's bills. But the other really significant thing that's affecting people's bills is the data center growth. And so we made some progress on that last year in terms of making sure data centers will pay their fair share in the transmission and distribution grid, but there's really more work that needs to be done, because in the generation side of things and energy supply, the growth of data centers is already showing up on consumers' bills. And if we don't take action to make sure that data centers, my bill is focused on demand response, essentially that they don't force the need to build a lot of new plants, then ratepayers are gonna continue to see increased bills. And so, and then, of course, also, if we don't take explicit action, then the increased energy generation will be fossil fuel generation, especially because at the federal level, the, you know, Trump is, you know, lining the pockets of his billionaire fossil fuel buddies, actively undermining the climate progress we've made, and, you know, raising taxes on clean energy and creating more subsidies for fossil fuels. So we really need to thread some needles as it relates to how data centers develop in the state of Maryland, so that we're really protecting ratepayers and protecting our climate goals. And there is a path to do that, and we're gonna be working to try to kind of make that path here in the state. There's no really good models yet, you know, a lot of states are wrestling with this question, and so we need to kind of make the road while we walk it. Related to that, also, you know, the billionaire fossil fuel buddies that are celebrating in DC, you know, makes it harder for us to meet our climate goals in the state of Maryland. And so we need to sort of reshuffle the way that we get solar built in the state. And so I won't go into the details, although I know we do have a lot of climate policy geeks in the city, I'm happy to go into the details with people one-on-one or by email. But we are, I have a bill that's gonna change the way that we do solar renewable energy credits, and by taking alternative compliance payments that are already being paid and directing them towards solar renewable energy credits, we can actually, without increasing bills at all, we can actually get solar built in Maryland, and so we'll be working on pushing that. I'll just quickly mention a few other things. On the housing front, I do have a consumer protection bill related to water utilities. We're seeing more and more landlords add sub-meters for water. And unlike sub-meters for electricity, which has protections in place to make sure that tenants are protected in the way that those are implemented, there's nothing for water. And so we'll be adding, you're bringing that bill. And then I do need to give a shout out to the Leland tenants, who are working really hard to convert the Leland building into a limited equity housing co-op. Senator Smith and I have been working on getting legislation in the state for a limited equity housing co-ops. It's a sort of unique model of maintaining affordable homeownership in perpetuity, and the state laws haven't really fit for that model, and so we're working on making that work. And lastly, because I know we have a lot of folks in the city who are fully committed to this model of the food forests, and the one in particular at Montgomery College, I will be bringing back my bill that's related to foraging and food forests, and really appreciate all the learning that I have had from Tacoma Park residents about that model for both sustainability and resilience, climate resilience, and just a beautiful public space for people to connect in. Wow.
Wonderful. I mean, the amount of work that you all are doing and have already done in preparation for this upcoming session is just mind-blowing, and we are extremely, extremely fortunate to have you working for us in Annapolis. So now we have a little bit of time just for any other Q and A items that folks may want to share. Just as a reminder, if you have any questions for D-20, or if D-20 has any questions for members of the council, just hit your mic. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you very much. This was really, really interesting and helpful. I have a question about the Police Accountability Act. There was a story in the Baltimore newspaper today about the backlog of hundreds of police accountability trial boards that have not been held, and we had our own first trial board here in Tacoma Park a few weeks ago, and it pointed to some challenges and deficiencies in the implementation of that law. And I was wondering whether you are hearing much about that legislation and its implementation, and whether you're anticipating that that is gonna be on your agenda in your committee, Senator, this year. I know it's early days yet, but I know there have been reports, there's been an evaluation done, and I wonder what you've already heard.
Yes, so I suspect we'll have a couple of pieces of legislation, we'll streamline the process or truncate the timeline to get rid of the backlog, but also because a lot of, the sheriffs have, in particular, have spoken to the difficulty of moving some of the more smaller offenses, so like, you know, you're out of uniform, or you're, you know, some of the more kind of pedestrian offenses, so not, nothing that would be public-facing. Those complaints, there is a significant backlog and a timeline for getting to them or for allowing them to kind of hang out, and the cost for addressing something like you're out of uniform is something that we need to streamline. So I've heard from both sides, you know, kind of rank and file, and then also chiefs and sheriffs, that it would like to kind of tighten that up, streamline that process. That's what I've seen in the committee, so I suspect we'll be addressing that in the next, less later, session.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, I wanted to come also to Senator Smith's comment about housing. And so both of the bills that we talked about on the House side here tonight are dealing with tenants in existing buildings. And you mentioned wanting to start a dialogue, I think that's what you said, about new development and how that, what do you see there? Because I also see, they're related, but I do see them as very distinct legislatively. So how are you wanting to take, to pursue the development side of it at this point?
One piece doesn't come out of my committee, I don't, we don't control zoning, so that's one, I know the governor's worked extremely hard on that, Jake Day, the Housing Secretary, has done phenomenal work, but that's not, that doesn't fall in the purview of my committee. What does fall under the purview is just the balance between, to making sure that every vulnerable renter is protected, to make sure that the courts aren't used as a kind of a way to expedite evictions, to ensure that residents have a cause of action for things like mold. Mold until last year was not one of those things you could use as a nuisance, so things like that. When we find those things, we want to fill those gaps to make sure that vulnerable renters in particular are protected. And good cause is part of that, I mean, that's an integral part of that. And I don't, I really do not think that implementing good cause is going to dissuade any developer from coming in and being interested in a jurisdiction, because in that sense, both the tenant and the landlord have, their interests are aligned. People want, the landlord wants to keep a tenant in place because the cost for converting or transitioning a unit is up to $15,000, I mean, $15,000 plus you're gonna lose rent for the months that you're, you know, flipping it. So you want to keep a tenant in your unit for a long period of time. And so in that sense, the interests are aligned. And so the discussion that I'm looking, that I'm, I want to make sure it happens at every level of government, is that understanding that the regulatory environment that you create can have unintended consequences for the development of new housing. And I just want people to be aware of that, and that's the only thing. And so for the discussion with regard to the good cause and then vacancy control, so if we pass that, nothing would change here in the state, because Montgomery County already has it. And nothing would change in Prince George County, because Prince George County already has it. So it would affect nothing, except for the fact that you would have the opportunity to adopt good cause if we pass the bill, as I talked about it. If there is interest in having that stripped out and just having a clean bill, I completely get that as well, then there could be companion legislation that comes in that's separate, and that can be considered separately as well. I just want to make sure that legislators at the municipal level, at the county level, and at the state level are having full-throated discussions about the regulatory environment that we're creating, and the balance between that and protecting our most vulnerable residents. I just think it's just an open conversation that I think we all need to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Smith, and I appreciate you bringing up that point. And one of the things that we've been doing in the city of Tacoma Park has been thinking about the push and the pull as it relates to the different policies that we have in place, and how in some regards, one policy may provide increased stability for our tenants, whereas another may pull a little bit more towards creating more housing choice for tenants and providing those opportunities for more housing availability. And sometimes those two things may be at odds with one another. And so I do think, and I often try to talk about housing policies as a toolbox, where you have a bunch of different tools, you don't use a hammer when you need a screwdriver. And so just trying to figure out which tool applies to which purpose, I think is a very good point. I do want to stress that I consider good cause to be one that is focused on stability or tenant stability and predictability, and not necessarily geared towards addressing housing supply. And so I think, in my mind, those two things are different, but I agree with you, we do need to look at the tools that we have, or tweak the tools that we have in order to make some modifications in terms of housing supply.
No, I completely agree. I just think that, again, those are two separate policies, but still the same regulatory environment is created when you layer and layer and layer, and so you just have to understand, just eyes wide open when you're doing it, that's all.
Yep, I totally agree. Councilmember Hamzah.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that the following point is coming from me and not from the entire council, but I think you've opened up something that we haven't talked a lot about as a council yet, and I haven't heard any of you speak to it. To me, it goes hand in hand with housing, is, you know, we're seeing the federal landscape shifting so dramatically in impacts it's having here locally on jobs and on job availability, which is huge revenue that the state really desperately needs. I actually wasn't fully aware that our population has been static as a state. That's quite interesting to me. I mean, we've had actually fairly static population here in the city, as while the county around us has been growing, but I would imagine we're probably seeing at least plateauing, if not shrinking, that's either gonna happen now or upcoming. So could any of you speak, perhaps Delegate Moon, since you touched on this, to ideas that are being tossed around right now about revenue diversification as a state? And obviously, for us, what would be most interesting is, as you discuss those ideas, anything that's being batted around that we could do as a municipality, to think about strategies we might take on that kind of income diversification and the job, like attracting industries that somehow might relate to our city. Thank you.
It's very, it's a very difficult question, and honestly, I will tell you, I have fewer answers than questions. But, you know, every year, the last, you know, couple of years, I have to do a legislative preview talk for, you know, people who follow policy, especially econ development and things like this. And, you know, I've just been looking at the population numbers with alarm and thinking that the fundamentals are actually what matters right now. You know, everything else we do, it gets screwed up. If we could do all of the econ development we want, try to track, you know, if you look at what the people who use buzzwords talk about, they want AI, quantum, biotech, cybersecurity, we have lots of task forces on these topics, we have little funding entities that we put together, they're gonna say it's not enough, we need to pump more money into it, and we need tax credits and all this stuff, but we don't have money, as I just suggested, and we're lacking federal support. So what can we do in that situation, where we're competing against the nation's worth of communities? So I'm just starting from the very bottom. And the population decline, again, that's the problem, that's a baseline problem. We can get some companies in here, but if we get the companies, but our population is flatlining or going down, we still have a huge revenue problem in our midst. And so for me, it all starts there. And frankly, the things that get, if you look back to when we were competing for Amazon HQ2, whatever you think about that, you know, after, when you cut everything away, it was just the fundamentals. Are they near an airport? Do they have educated workforce? How much does a housing cost near there? What does the transportation look like? And Governor Hogan suddenly was proposing billions of dollars that everyone thought was like Amazon subsidies, but when you looked at what it was spending on, it was like a new metro entrance, Beltway, cleaning up Beltway exits, you know, more bus lines and things like this. It was just the fundamentals for our community. That was the econ development that people thought we needed in place to get to land at Amazon at the time they were running a national search. So again, I go back to the basics, you know? If you look at Allegheny and Baltimore in Maryland, two places with population decline, it's very bad. It leads to school closures and all of the nasty fights that come with that, again, shrink, increasing property taxes because there are fewer people to sustain your service level, cuts, all of that good stuff. And so I think we need to stabilize our population, and it's just a very difficult conversation. Nobody wants the new housing near them, they don't want the new buildings. But when I look at DC, where they have somewhat stabilized their population, and they've done it with a lot of high earners, they basically engineered two or three giant new neighborhoods into existence that charge high rents and are pumping, you know, six-figure earning residents into the city to stabilize their revenues. And I hate to just have a very hard look at it, but that's where we're at, because our revenue sources are drying up, and I'm just looking at how can we stabilize our population? The state had declining population in some of the post-COVID years, which is alarming again, and it started to stabilize a bit. But that's only been in the last year or two because of international migrants. And I can tell you, we can't count on those numbers right now. Everything is showing that we're messing that up, too. And I can tell you, we can't count on those numbers right now. Everything is showing that we're messing that up too. And though the TV wants you to think these are like people coming in raping children and, you know, causing crimes, the migrants that I'm talking about were mostly highly educated people coming here for the skilled labor that is needed here for the federal agencies and all the research institutions that they're getting. So I go back to the basics. We need to stabilize our population. We need more affordable housing to stop them from leaving or choosing other locations. So it's competitive in that sense. But yeah, we need, we need to have, to be, we, we have a tendency for Maryland to be a place where we say no. And I think at the moment, we need to be a place that says yes.
Mayor, may I just press on the housing aspect of that though quickly? The, you, you said, you're using the word affordable housing though, as you talked about six-figure income people. Do you mean middle-income, mixed-income housing? And I think this is very important to our city right now. As we're looking at our rent stabilization policy coming up, we're about to do a review. And we're also looking at a large, relatively large piece of property where we've talked about having, um, housing. So if you could just speak more to that thing.
It's hard to know what the answer is, but we need housing at all income levels. And that's, that's the reality of it. And so right now, we're, we're sort of in a place where we're, we're finding ways to finance the affordable part of it. And actually Montgomery County is, it's not just pumping money into it. They have somewhat, you know, self-sustaining revenues for some of their things, but a lot of this is not like that. And so we need to be, you know, when I leave the, the area, I'm always surprised to discover that people nationally hold up Montgomery County as like a national model for how to do housing. And we have so many fights here locally about, about it. But, but for example, this policy where like you can't build new construction here unless X percent of it is affordable or under, under, under market rate. Other counties in Maryland now are beginning to adopt that very simple reform, which we think is inadequate here in Montgomery County. And I'm discovering that nationally, people look at, look at that as a model. But it's not enough. But the, but the standard, the MOCO philosophy has been you put in some affordable with every market rate unit that comes in or, or something like that, right? But it's some answer to this question about how we're getting housing in from all ends of the income spectrum. We can do more there. But at the end of the day, you know, we have the energy price issues that Laura knows all about, but nobody wants any of this stuff near them. And, and, you know, the solar and the wind stuff is getting fought, the housing is getting fought. And we're all looking at the underlying numbers and thinking, oh, this is bad. Something's got to be done. We've heard housing mentioned here many times, but we've had very, very contentious fights about actually citing it. So this is why I say, you know, these things are related. The fed, the federal thing is gone, you know, the, the war, the war chest is not flush for at least two, four, and probably more years to get that back online. And our options are limited. So we kind of have to do something. And I think looking at population decline numbers and what happens to Cumberland and, um, and Baltimore when, when they are in that situation, I just think we don't have a choice.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. This is, this is such a really vibrant discussion. And I'm just so, so grateful for all the work that each of you does in Annapolis and, and year round. So, um, there, there's so many things that I could, that, that I could bring up that are making connections for me. I wanted to let you know that doing the math on the, the, the super crucial bike trail segment, your $500,000, if you can get it for us, that'll build about 700 feet, you know? So picture two football fields, you know? That's, that's a nice stitch to get DC connected to Silver Spring. And, and when you talk about trying to stem the tide of people leaving, I ran into a cousin of mine who lives in, in Illinois. And he said, oh, we've been coming to Tacoma Park, my wife and I, for, for little vacations. And they've been staying like on Park Avenue. I had no idea. He says, we really want to move there when, um, as soon as we can. And it's the little things like these trails and connections that do counter a, a lot of the things that make it hard to be here. So let's not lose sight of that. I, I, I wanted to kind of flip things and ask you, um, a couple of you, what we can or should do, what you're hoping municipalities and localities can and should do, to be in synergy with what you're trying to do at the state level. So, um, in either order, Delegate Wilkins, thank you for your leadership of the Black Caucus. And you, you mentioned legislation that Black Caucus has strongly supported. And are there things that, that, um, from that perspective, you would like to see a municipality like Tacoma Park doing more of or prioritizing in terms of racial equity? And then Delegate Charcutian, um, you know, we have our climate emergency response. And it's very hard in these days to, to keep our eye on that ball. But certainly climate action is anti-fascist action as well right now. So I wondered whether there are, um, hopes that you might have for municipalities right now to stay in this fight or to focus on certain kinds of actions in that, um, in that climate response realm?
Thank you so much for your comments and for that question. And I'm always proud to see Tacoma Park's priorities and agenda because it certainly has an equity lens and has a focus on the diversity of our community and really uplifting our residents. And so I think that we are already off to an excellent start. When it comes to Legislative Black Caucus of Maryland, um, one of the things that I would lift up is the importance of, of coalition building and some of the support that we've been getting on overriding some of the vetoes that took place. I think as everyone knows, we passed legislation, we talked about some, some bills that we passed, but we also, they don't become law until they are signed. And the Renew Act is one, um, that was vetoed. Another bill that the Black Caucus strongly supported, um, as one of our top priorities, actually dealt with the issue of establishing a Maryland Reparations Commission in our state. And what that does is it joins Illinois, California, New York and other states. And taking a look at the historic discrimination, we talk about racial equity, whether it's housing and housing discrimination, redlining, Maryland is the birthplace of redlining in the United States of America. And putting a commission of experts together to create a, a plan and have a discussion around what that repair, what true repair looks like in our state. And so that bill unfortunately was vetoed. And we've been building a really strong coalition around overriding that veto. One of our groups of coalition partners is the environmental community. And we recently held an event together talking about the Renew Act, which if you really think about it, the Renew Act, part of it is around repairing the damage when it comes to environmental justice. We know that a lot of times communities of color tend to bear the brunt of climate change. I was born in Kingston, Jamaica. And just today, I was hearing our, the Jamaican Parliament talk about the fact that Jamaica has not contributed much to the climate change and climate disaster yet is bearing the brunt of it when it comes to Hurricane Melissa that just devastated, um, the country, right? And so putting that together with the need for environmental justice and that being a part of repair when we think about the reparations commission that we are seeking to establish. So the two groups came together in coalition. I think that type of coalition building and having the support of, of the city council, having the support of residents as we seek to override that is definitely a top priority for the legislature on both bills. And I would also lift up Senator Smith's, um, amazing leadership on the Yes Act that deals with charging youth as adults. We are a high incarceration state. We've talked very positively about some of our amazing work in the state. But something that is shameful in the state of Maryland is that we have the highest incarceration rate when it comes to, um, young black people. And in particular, when you look at our prison population, black residents in Maryland are 30% of the population, but 72% of our prisons. And we know from data, we know, um, from statistics that black people tend to be over-sentenced. And we did pass legislation this session to help take a look at that, called the Second Look Act, to look at those sentences. But there's so much more to do. So those are some of the issues that are on the Black Caucus agenda that we love formal support from the council and from residents. And we are really looking at things from health, housing, public safety, um, and education as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your question. I'll start by just building on, on some of Delegate Wilkins' comments of, you know, like making sure that all of our climate work is climate justice, right? So coming at it with the equity lens, there's no question that both, um, the, the inequity in terms of who's impacted by the climate and who's contributed to the climate impacts, right? That, that she talked about. But also just, you know, like it's very important that in all of our climate investments, we're making sure that the solar and the efficiency and the, whatever it is we're investing in is prioritizing the people who are struggling the most to pay their bills or who are harmed the most by, um, by, by climate, climate change. And, and I also think just tying it back also to the anti-fascism, it is like historically and across this world, plutocrats and polluters are tied to fascist and authoritarian regimes. Like that is actually the sort of anti-science, pro-pollution, undermine, um, you know, the, uh, regulations, kind of, they do tend to tie together. So I, I do, I do think it is important to continue to talk about climate and our work on climate, um, in that context. In terms of the specifics, I think you're asking like, what does Tacoma Park do? I actually think Tacoma Park does a, a really remarkable job of figuring out how to, um, stack on top of, sadly, it used to be stacking on top of federal and state and county, you know? And like seeing if the Tacoma Park investment can help push, you know, a, a home over the edge in terms of the efficiency gains or the electrification. Now, of course, most of the federal money is gone, um, but there is still state programs and, um, and county programs, Electrify MC being one of them that is, uh, still operational, that I think, and then Empower in this, in the state program. So I do, I think to the extent that I'm familiar with the county, the cities' programs, I think there is that like, what's the missing gap? And how do we take a relatively modest budget that the city has and, and use it to sort of help, help with that? I think the, the city does a good job with that. I also think that this is a really good time for the city to be paying attention to the Community Choice Aggregator that after years, it took us three years to get it out of the General Assembly and then painful process at the Public Service Commission of writing the regs. And now the county is at a place where they are about to move forward. They passed the law to enable the CCA and they're about to move forward now with the planning. And so it's the county's DEP is in, Department of Environmental Protection is in the process. And, and the city has always had as a priority getting that CCA done because it's crucial to the city meeting its climate and greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. It's also crucial to the county meeting theirs. And there's a lot of really important decisions that are about to get made about how those energy contracts look and how we make sure there's a, there's a temptation to be like, well, let's just sign a standard contract with whatever the mix of fossil fuels and whatever's on the grid. And then eventually we'll get to clean energy. And it's actually possible, it's a little harder, but it's possible to use a bunch of tools around flexible load and demand response and aggregating homes, hot water heaters and, and really start from the beginning with policies that are both lowering costs to all of our, all of our consumers and starting to move towards our climate goals, even in the challenging times that we're in. So I would encourage the city to get, to, to be paying attention to that process that's happening at DEP. You have a lot of knowledge in the city, both residents as well as in the professional staff and on the council. And so I would say that if there's one thing that you kind of want to take and, and really focus on, I would say that would be something that could really move the needle in the very near term.
Thank you so much. So leverage and lobby. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, um, that, that does sum it up. In terms of, of the discussion this evening. And I just want to thank again our District 20 delegation for joining us and, and having this really fruitful conversation. And, um, on behalf of the city of Tacoma Park, we look forward to working with you all during this next legislative session. All right. And with that, we're done with this part of the meeting. We are going to reconvene our meeting. We started this evening at 6:30 in our annual meeting with our District 20 delegation. We were joined by Senator Will Smith and delegates David Moon, Lord Charcutian, and Janelle Wilkins to discuss city of Tacoma Park legislative priorities for the 26th legislative session, as well as the priorities of our District 20 delegation and ways in which we can work together collaboratively in the upcoming months. In terms of, we've already done a roll call when we convened for our earlier session. In terms of the agenda for this evening, this evening, we will have one work session, and that is to discuss our budget priorities. On Wednesday, December the 10th, the City Council will have an administrative function on the city manager's evaluation, starting at 6:30 p.m. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public. On Wednesday, December the 10th, we will convene in the auditorium at 7:30. We will have two presentations that evening. The first is the Housing Community Development Annual Report, and the second is the Arts and Humanities Committee Annual Report. We will then have two voting sessions. The first is a resolution adopting the FY 2027 budget priorities, and the second is the resolution providing for the City Council winter recess, December the 11th through January 2025 through January the 13th of 2026. And so that would mean that the council will not meet until, again, until January the 31st. But just as a quick reminder, on Sunday, December the 14th, is the first day of Hanukkah. On Wednesday, December the 24th, is Christmas Eve. City offices and facilities are closed. On Thursday, December the 25th, is Christmas Day. City offices and facilities are closed. On Friday, December the 26th, is the first day of Kwanzaa. On Wednesday, December the 31st, is New Year's Eve. City facilities are closed at 6:00 p.m. And on Wednesday, December the 31st, the City Council will not meet. And Thursday, January the 1st, 2026, is New Year's Day. City offices and facilities are closed for the New Year's holiday. The next item for this evening is a report out from the closed session on November the 13th. Closed session summary, November 13th, 2025. On November the 13th, 2025, the City Council convened in the Community Center Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. to vote to enter into closed session pursuant to Maryland Code 3-305BII and Section 3-305B7 to meet with the auditor conducting the audit related to Cooper v. City of Tacoma Park. Councilmember Hanzak moved to convene the closed session. Councilmember Landman seconded the motion. The motion carried. Voting for Mayor Cersei, Councilmembers Landman, Dabala, Schlegel, Gilbert, and Hanzak. Councilmember Westlake was absent. The council reconvened in the council conference room for the closed meeting. Present for the closed meeting were Mayor Cersei, Councilmembers Landman, Dabala, Schlegel, Gilbert, and Hanzak, City Clerk Carpenter, Deputy City Manager Huptee, and Attorney Auditor Bernadette Stinson. Ms. Stinson briefed the council on preliminary observations and findings, then discussed with council additional work to be completed. No actions or votes were taken. The meeting was adjourned at 9:00 p.m. The council did not reconvene in open session after the meeting. With that, we will move to public comments. Just as a reminder for public comments, comments are limited to three minutes, and please just, for, to help us out, provide your name, and if you know it, your ward. And so with that, I'm going to make sure I turn on the mics. Excellent. And do we have any general public comments this evening? There are no voting items. Any general? Come on down.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Milford Sprecher. I'm a member, I live in Ward 1. I've been a resident for 40 years and previously lived in Ward 3. I spoke with the city clerk beforehand, because I'm representing a group, I think I get five minutes.
Five minutes, that's correct.
So I'm representing the Tacoma Park Community Budget Working Group, and we've been working for probably the last nine months, looking at ways that, how the city operates and to come up with some suggestions on how the city could operate more efficiently. So this is a presentation that we, if I can figure out, okay, that we, it's a shortened version of what we gave last year, but I think some of you have seen it, but I think it's good just to revisit it again. So, you know, high taxes in the city are causing a lot of stress on community members, specifically seniors. There are a lot of people who've lost their jobs, and a lot of people are housing burdened in this community. I think we all know that the city has the highest property tax rate in the county, almost twice the second lowest, which is the city of Rockville. Another thing that we also know is that the city property tax revenue has increased significantly over the last 10 years, up 127% since 2004, and, actually, that's 20 years. But, and then the Consumer Price Index is up 67%, so our taxes have gone up almost twice as much as the Consumer Price Index. So why are public expenditures so high? We think the three major issues are the expanding number of city staff, capital improvement programs, and public safety. Over the last, since 2014, the city staff has increased by 22 FTEs, which is about 18%, while the population of the city has remained essentially the same. Also, the high cost of public safety. We have three comparisons here with Tacoma Park, Gaithersburg, and Rockville. Tacoma Park is at $531 per capita. The next highest is Rockville at $193 per capita. So we're significantly higher than similar jurisdictions in our county. So the key challenge is how does the city live within its means and within the taxpayers' means? The recent Raftellus report that you all have commissioned shows expenditures exceeding revenues with tax rate constant or with a constant yield, and it's assuming that expenditures remain at the same level. And here's one of the charts from the Raftellus report, and on the left, you can see the red is the cash out, which I'm assuming is expenditures, which exceeds cash in, which is the green, with the green line. And then the unreserved, unassigned reserve balance, the chart on the right, continues to decrease until fifth year 2029, which is going to require a tax increase in order to maintain the amount of reserves that we need to keep in the city budget. So how do we live within the city's residents' means? And we have some suggestions. We don't proclaim to be experts, but some of the things that we've looked at that we think could be helpful. Overtime, shift staff size, and top stop salaries back in line with the city of our size. Evaluate transferring some police duties to the county. Defer non-routine capital projects. Implement meaningful performance metrics, so we can see how well our departments are doing. Evaluate transferring stormwater and other work to the county. Look at implementing a modified vehicle and equipment replacement schedule that might reduce our equipment replacement costs. Look at increasing commercial taxes and/or fees to replace tax dollars lost from the repeal of the inventory tax in 2018. Explore increases in railroad, utility, and vacant building taxes. Also have more budget transparency. You know, publish reports of contracts with consultants and service providers and their dollar values. And then eliminate, you know, we had, we gained two and a half FTEs through ARPA funding, and now that funding is gone, so look at eliminating the ARPA-funded positions. So the proposal we put forth is that the city adopt a budget based on less than the constant yield, the constant yield being has increased significantly over the last ten years, up one hundred and twenty-seven percent since two thousand and four. And actually, that's twenty years. But, and then the, the Consumer Price Index is up sixty-seven percent. So our taxes have gone up almost twice as much as the Consumer Price Index. So why are public expenditures so high? We think the three major issues are the expanding number of city staff, capital improvement programs, and public safety. Over the last, since two thousand and fourteen, the city staff has increased by twenty-two FTEs, which is about eighteen percent, while the population of the city has remained essentially the same. Also, the high cost of public safety. We have three comparisons here with Tacoma Park, Gaithersburg, and Rockville. Tacoma Park is at five hundred and thirty-one dollars per capita. The next highest is Rockville at one hundred and ninety-three dollars per capita. So we're significantly higher than, than similar jurisdictions in our county. So the key challenge is how does the city live within its means and within the taxpayers' means? The recent Raftellus report that I, that you all have commissioned shows expenditures exceeding revenues with tax rate constant or with a constant yield. It's assuming that expenditures remain at the same level. And here's a, one of the, the charts from the Raftellus report. And on the left, you can see the red is the cash out, which I'm assuming is expenditures, which exceeds cash in, which is the green, with the green line. And then the unreserved, unassigned reserve balance, the chart on the right, continues to decrease until fifth year twenty twenty-nine, which is going to require a tax increase in order to maintain the amount of reserves that we need to keep in the, in the city budget. So how do we live within the city's residents' means? And we have some suggestions. We don't proclaim to be experts, but some of the things that we've looked at that we think could be helpful. Overtime, shift staff size, and top stopped salaries back in line with the city of our size. Evaluate transferring some police duties to the county. Defer non-routine capital projects. Implement meaningful performance metrics, so we can see how well our departments are doing. Evaluate transferring stormwater and other work to the county. Look at implementing a modified vehicle and equipment replacement schedule that might reduce our equipment replacement costs. Look at increasing commercial taxes and/or fees to replace tax dollars lost from the repeal of the inventory tax in twenty eighteen. Explore increases in railroad, utility, and vacant building taxes. Also have more budget transparency. You know, publish reports of contracts with consultants and service providers and their dollar values. And then eliminate, you know, we had, we gained two and a half FTEs through ARPA funding, and now that funding is gone, so look at eliminating the ARPA-funded positions. So the proposal we put forth is that the city adopt a budget based on less than the constant yield, the constant yield being the amount of, the tax rate that needs to be to obtain the amount of revenue that was gathered the year before. And hold a public hearing on that budget and get comments from the, from the public about it. Our current residential property tax rate is fifty-two, fifty-five point twenty-two cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. You know, I think at the end of the day, affordability is something that people talk about. One of the reasons I moved here was because it was an affordable community. As time has gone on, it's become less affordable, for a variety of reasons. And the taxes are not, are only one of those. But if we want to retain the people who live here and attract younger families, I think that's, we need to keep a lid on the city expenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm Tom Gagliardo.
Can you give us one second so that we can take down the PowerPoint presentation?
Sure.
And we can see the clock?
I'm sorry.
And I just want to, for the last speaker, will the presentation, was the presentation provided or emailed to council? I don't recall seeing it. Okay, we can get it from her.
Good evening, Tom Gagliardo, I live in Ward One. But as I frequently say, all of you represent all of us. You've also heard me frequently say that we're all in this together, and we have to get this right. So I would ask you, in considering what Milford just presented to you, not as an attack, but as useful information that you can use to make wise decisions. Please look at it that way. I took a look at the council members' response to the budget surveys, and I note a few things. Councilmember Dabala, you stated, quote, "I see need for some expansion in a couple of areas using emergency funds set aside last year. I do not see areas to reduce dramatically." Tonight, would you please share with the community the couple of areas that you see as needing some expansion? Mayor Cersei, you stated, quote, "I think that we need to work within our current means." Good rhetoric. "But I believe that we might have to reallocate resources within our current programs to ensure that we are able to address rapidly changing needs." No doubt, there are rapidly changing circumstances. Please tell us tonight, please share with the community tonight, what you mean by, quote, "current means," and specify resources you believe, quote, "might have to be reallocated." Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
Randy Gibson, Ward Three. Greetings, council and staff. First, I want to offer my full support to the presentation made by Milford. As I see it, a financial reckoning is coming due. And you have an important choice on the parameters of next year's budget. Your options, as I see it, anticipate increased revenue for budget growth and wish lists, or two, reduce spending by focusing on essential, essential public services and emergency needs, or some combination of those two. What you decide sets the stage for who can afford to live in Tacoma Park. I asked, as you discuss the council's budget priorities tonight, I implore you to focus on a course correction and the financial sustainability of current residents. I asked Google for potential solutions to excessive taxation. The results include, included, spending limits. Lawmakers are considering legislation to cap local government spending growth, often tying it to inflation and enrollment rates to alleviate the tax burden on citizens. Progressive revenue options. To move away from regressive taxes, some policymakers suggest exploring actions like local progressive income taxes, real estate transfer taxes, or high-value, on high-value properties, or vacancy taxes. Consolidation. Consolidation or elimination of some units is suggested as a way to increase efficiency and cut property taxes. And lastly, they suggest transparency and accountability. Implementing transparency requirements and performance benchmarking can help residents understand how their money is spent and hold officials accountable. Please consider, please consider these options as you decide on your budget priorities. Let me also plug one specific budget reduction. Drop the two point five ARPA-funded positions, including an accountant, accounting analyst, and I T. project specialist, and one-half the expense of the second deputy city manager at the end of the calendar year twenty twenty-six. The FY twenty-six adopted budget salary benefits and forecasted FY twenty-seven increase for these positions is approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Potential half-year savings would be approximately one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The extension of these ARPA-funded positions or their FTEs with general funds was not the intent of the council when it was voted on. Don't let inertia legitimize this administrative overreach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll send that separately to the clerk.
Thank you very much, and we'll make sure that, that gets to the council. Do we have any other general public comments? Do we have any virtual public comments? Ms. Matruwi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Wonderful, and we can hear you too.
I can't see you on my iPad, but I can see you on my TV. That's half and half. I'm, I'm, I'm not happy because I tried, I looked in to the twentieth district meeting, just like I was supposed to. I followed directions, and no one acknowledged me. I really felt bad, like nobody, I really tried to get in. And, and I followed all the directions, and I couldn't, and then somebody said, oh, she's not, no one's there. So I'm upset. But anyways, thank you. I'm here to, for the people like me, people with disabilities who tend to be ignored. And I'd always, I'd been fighting for trying to get housing, convert my ramshackle house into a small place for people with disabilities to live in. But I've got no help, no interest, no help. It's like people with disabilities, I think you just want us to go and die, so you don't have to deal with us. But, but we are, we are around, and we are important, as important as you. Thank you. And, and I might lose my house because I can't pay the property taxes this year. By three months, I've got, three months, I won't have the forty years then. But you're not going, I'm not leaving. If they come to pull me and my son out, I'm not leaving. Because I don't think the structure is fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matruwi. Do we have any other general public comments, virtually? Okay, great, we're going to move to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly say thank you to those who made it possible for me to attend the National League of Cities, NLC Summit in Salt Lake City a couple of weeks ago. That was an enlightening experience for me. Thank you to the taxpayers who made that possible. Thank you to Assistant City Clerk Navarte, Navart, Navarte? Yeah. I've been saying your name for like fifteen years and can't get it right. But thank you for, for your help in getting me situated and getting there. But I sat through some very informative sessions. I met with some pretty smart people in various leadership roles across the country. So a few really good takeaways. I sat in a session regarding housing as an economic strategy. And I look forward to having a conversation with Director McNally about some of the takeaways from there. But for the most part, it confirmed to me, I'm sure my mic's on, confirmed for me some of the good work that we're already doing here. So many of the sessions that I sat in just confirmed for me that we're already doing so much great work. And again, appreciative for the opportunity to go and, and see that. I also sat in on a session about drones as a public safety tool. And I was really interested about whether or not our police department has an M O U. with Montgomery County, and whether or not we have the capability of deploying drones in certain circumstances. But I learned about the, how very valuable they have been to some jurisdictions throughout the, the country. So I look forward to maybe having a conversation with the chief to see where we are with that. Had a really good meeting with City Manager Dispirito yesterday. We had our monthly meeting. And I'm appreciative for you bringing in Mr. Bradley Williams in on the meeting, and Director Clark from Recreation Department. Some of you made me remember that Mr. Williams came some weeks ago and made a passionate appeal for some things to be done differently with our Recreation Department. I've since had a meeting one-on-one with him, and I thought it important that he have a conversation with Director Clark, so he, he can be enlightened on some of the things the Recreation Department is already doing. And I think that happened yesterday. There were so many other things that, so many takeaways from that meeting, some things that I didn't know, and certainly Mr. Williams didn't know that the Recreation Department is already doing. Some things had to stop because of COVID and because of staffing. But Director Clark is looking to, to start some of those things back up now that we've hired a new employee to coordinate some of our team outreach. So a real positive meeting, and again, thank you, City Manager Dispirito, for bringing in Mr. Williams. I don't think he had to do that, but you did. You understood the importance of it, and thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Westlake?
Thank you. I know it's, it's a long night, so I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in last night's meeting for the traffic study in New Hampshire Gardens. It was a great turnout in the room at the rec center. I don't know how many people were online, but I imagine a fair amount, because it was kind of rainy. So it was a really great presentation. And if folks want to get that information, they still can. And I want residents to know that there is a survey to kind of rate how strongly you feel or not about some of the recommendations or some of the possibilities that we could do for traffic calming in that neighborhood. And that survey closes on Monday. So it's just this week. And so, and thank you to the staff that organized that, the H C D. department. Thanks for City TV for setting it all up, really appreciate it. And, and similarly, a few weeks back, we had our Ward Six Community Public Safety meeting, also at the rec center, also online, as well as in person. And I, I just saw the email this evening that the police department notifying that the video from that meeting is, is now accessible online. I know a good number of folks have asked me for that, so I will hopefully pass that on to folks that are interested. But it is out there now to view. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlake. Councilmember Dabala?
Yes, thank you. I also want to thank everybody that made it possible for, for me to attend the National League of Cities meetings in Salt Lake City with Councilmember Gilbert, and I did find it very valuable. And I also was able to touch base with NLC staff on projects and grants and technical assistance that the city has been receiving from NLC. So that was, that was helpful to catch up on that. I also sat in a Chevy Blazer Patrol rated vehicle and did a few other things. The, the two workshop tracks that most attracted me were the one on civility, which I thought, like, wow, a whole workshop track on what people are, what communities are doing to deal with this atmosphere that we're all in right now. And the financial management, because we are not the only community facing some financial issues because of the federal impacts and other things going on. So enough about that. Small Business Saturday was awesome last weekend, and there's so much going on this weekend that I won't even, someone else I'm sure is going to cover. But it's a great weekend to be in Tacoma Park coming up. Thank you to the folks who did the budget presentation and put that stuff together. I will be getting back with comments, as I did last year, on specifics of some of the things in your, in your slides. I was going to say during the council discussion coming up, the two areas that I was interested in making a priority within the city budget. And so spoiler alert, it's about the immigration-related issues, the supporting most vulnerable residents that are impacted by all the federal, all the federal changes. That's the area that I, and that, when I said emergency services, we put aside a bunch of money last year for the purposes of, in case we had revenue drops or in case we had additional needs, resident needs. And so that's what I meant by emergency services. So I hope that explains what I referred to in, in the comments. And I have one other area that we talked about a while ago, but we'll bring it up during the meeting. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to those who made presentations tonight about the budget. I appreciate your detailed attention to that. I think it was a very good point that you made about the Raftellus presentation, which was helpful. But it, of course, is true that they, that when they did their analysis, they made assumptions about expenditures being held constant and only looked at changes in revenues. And there are, of course, two sides to that coin, and we have a responsibility to look at both sides of that coin. So I appreciate the point that you made. I just want to point to, I, the city has a lot going on in Old Town this weekend, and they're doing a great job advertising it, so I won't go into those things. But I just wanted to point to three other things that are happening in the city in the next couple of days that deserve our attention. And one is that tomorrow night here, Senator Smith is holding an Immigration Town Hall from six to eight P M. to talk about what's going on, inform people. And I hope people will feel free to attend. I think it's great that he's coming here. We very much appreciate that, and I think it's a very good sign that we are hosting it, and I very much appreciate that. Thank you to the city and to the staff who are going to be here for that. I also wanted to remind people that the Alternative Gift Fair is going to be hosted by the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church from twelve to four P M. this coming Saturday. And that's a wonderful event that is very much Tacoma Park at its finest, where you can give gifts to other people. The gift that you give is a gift of, of charity, and it's a great way to, to celebrate the holiday season. And finally, the community band is going to be holding its holiday concert here in this very room this coming Sunday from three to four P M. And I hope to see many people at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. Thank you to those who presented and were offering suggestions regarding the budget, and to Mr. Olson, who's offered suggestions, and Mr. Hubenew, I see here, as well, offered suggestions in previous weeks. And to Ms. Matruwi for so often sharing residents' personal experiences about the impact of our property taxes. City Manager Dispirito, I just wanted to thank you as well for your outreach and listening in our monthly one-on-one meetings, and for the care you've given in meeting with other residents who've had specific concerns about code enforcement, native trees, budget, preservation of buildings, and so many other issues. Just your openness to the spirit of volunteerism and to community expertise is, is really a wonderful thing. And thank you also for your continuing advocacy of city interests with S H A., the county police, and so many other governmental entities. I thought that early this evening, it was great to hear the suggestions from Delegates Charcutian and Wilkins on how we can focus our energies and resources locally to take advantage of the new community choice aggregation arrangements, and to advocate for reparations work, reduction of the incarceration rate for youth and for Black Marylanders. work, reduction of the incarceration rate for youth and for Black Marylanders, and for making sure that our climate response priorities are on those residents who are made most vulnerable by climate change. These could include residents of multifamily buildings and homes who are vulnerable in heat waves. And Councilmember Hansak has spoken to that very forcefully in the past in flooding events and when walking or biking on sidewalks and streets and needing safety and shade. So I hope that in our conversations tonight, we do not flinch in our commitment to those things. There was a book out a couple of years ago that got a lot of attention, I believe it was called Subtract. And its point was that in creative problem solving, so often, 90% of the time, our thought goes to, well, what can we add to solve this problem? And it was saying that quite often, it's subtracting can solve a problem as well. And if you think about that, subtracting can also be a creative act. So I'm going to subtract my last 40 seconds now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Hansak?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I'm sort of hesitating to share the thoughts that I had prepared for myself tonight because they've just been keeping me up at night and I thought, well, there's no good time to share them, so I'll just share them now because they're hot on my mind. You know, as we look out at the federal landscape and we see how many aspects of our democracy are falling apart, in my view, I look at our local government and I think, I'm so grateful to have our D-20, I'm so grateful to have this city that I live in, this state at a time where the federalism that we have right now is, I'm not going to say it's failing us, but the federal government is certainly failing us. And sometimes I wish we didn't have to be a part of it. So, and I look here and I feel concerned because every week, there's something that comes to my desk as the Ward Five representative that makes me feel like too many aspects of what we do in our city are demand-driven, but from residents, from certain residents. And I don't, and I say, no, that's not fair. Let me restate that, excuse me. They are demand-driven, period. But what happens, because they are demand-driven, is that those who have the most leisure time in our city, which is often, but not always, many of the people that have more money in our town, and our town is very bifurcated socio-economically, mean that their demands are met more often. And I often, I start to feel self-pity and I sound very cynical and I know you've all heard me say this, I'm getting tired of hearing myself, I make $25,000, you know? I'm sick of hearing myself say it. I sound pathetic, right? And it is kind of pathetic. But here's the situation, is that I don't care if I win or lose next time, but I am very upset that in this time of trying to work towards democracy, that whoever comes after me must represent the people of our town and they must not feel as alone as I feel all the time trying to fight this fight that feels like a lost cause. And I'm struggling because I feel like I'm pulling it apart piece by piece, you know, from how we do our leaf collection to how we do our code enforcement, to how we decide where our traffic safety and calming happens. And I just want to remind those residents who might happen to be listening to us or my colleagues that as we look at these systems, I really welcome your efforts to very proactively and forcefully radically think about changing business as usual whenever we have the opportunity. Because frankly, I am totally disappointed by the findings of the Compensation Committee and part of that relates back to how we go about picking our committee members, which we've made good progress on, but maybe not enough. Because I'm worried about what the future of our town is going to bring if we can't get our committee members across the city to look like the demographics of our city and they don't right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak.
Okay, well, there's a lot going on in the city. I know that has been noted. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I hope everyone had a peaceful, restful, very filling Thanksgiving. And I want to give a special shout out to all of our nonprofit organizations that were giving out food during the Thanksgiving holiday. It is so important to make sure that everyone can eat, but also important to make sure that people don't have the added pressure of not having what they need during holiday season. And so in that regard, I want to thank our volunteer fire department and police staff that supported Cookies with Santa. I had family in town and was able to bring some little ones to Cookies with Santa and it was great. So I want to thank folks who did that. Also, it was already mentioned, the Small Business Saturday in Holiday Market was awesome as well. In terms of, I want to thank our HCD staff who facilitated and worked with our consultants on the Ward Six Traffic Study Meeting that happened on Tuesday. I was able to participate in that as well and I just heard so many people talk about how excellent the consultants were and how they explained the needs of the community. Councilmember Westlake and I had a chance, very briefly before this meeting, to go to the Council of Governments Membership Meeting and Awards Reception. We weren't able to stay for the business part of the meeting, but we were excited to support former Mayor Kate Stewart, former Tacoma Park Mayor, now County Councilmember Kate Stewart in her receipt of the COG Scroll Award in recognition of her public service to COG and to the county. So congratulations to Councilmember Stewart. It was already mentioned that Will Smith will be hosting an Immigration Town Hall. I just want to correct the record, this event is not hosted or sponsored by the city. We are, Senator Smith requested to reserve our space and we are providing space to be reserved, but the city is not a sponsor for the event. It is an event that is being hosted by Senator Smith along with CASA. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. I will be in attendance and I hope that folks are. There's also a Zoom option because it's a real possibility that this room could get pretty full. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. The Washington Adventist, yes, I will be attending the Christmas concert that will be happening at the Schlegel Seventh Day Adventist Church on Friday at 7:30. So excited to participate in that. Just want to do a quick run-through of the things that are happening this weekend. There is a blood drive that is happening on, here on Saturday from 11:30, it starts at 11:30 AM. Want to encourage people to sign up for the Gift of Life, the blood drive that's happening on Saturday. There's also the Alternative Gift Fair. I'm looking forward to attending that. It will be at the Presbyterian Church on Tulip Ave. And it's a great way to just kind of learn about different organizations throughout, not just the city, but through the region. So I want to encourage people to take time out to see that. Also, this Sunday is Pajama Rama. That was my Halloween costume, so I may have to just break it out again. So it was Pajama Rama Holiday Shopping and Holiday Market. That is on Sunday morning. And as Councilmember Lammon mentioned, the Tacoma Park Community Band Event is at 3:00 PM in the auditorium on Sunday. I do want to also thank those for the opportunity to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Salt Lake City. It was a really great opportunity to not only learn through the sessions, but to also network with different organizations and other elected officials across the country. I had an opportunity to, we were a Just Serve city. We received recognition during a council meeting, but we were in good company with a number of other municipalities across the country who have a spirit of volunteerism and are doing great work to give back to the community. So had an opportunity to attend events for the Just Serve communities. Also, had an opportunity to support Councilmember Dibala and kudos to Councilmember Dibala for election again on the National League of Cities Board. So we are excited about that. Additionally, I too was able to attend the Dignity Index Workshop, a tour of Salt Lake City housing projects and policy issues that they're doing in terms of trying to create and generate more housing within their city. These are some great opportunities for us as electeds to learn about what others are doing and also to share some of the great things that we're doing here in the city of Tacoma Park. I also was able to participate in an immigration session and sat next to a mayor from a town in Illinois, just outside of Chicago, and was able to get some really great ideas on some of the things that they've had to do in light of immigration enforcement that was happening in Chicago. So really appreciate everyone's support of the council, being able to have these types of professional development opportunities. As we develop, it better equips us to be able to serve you, but it also provides us with the opportunity to provide resources and information back to our staff. And on that note, I do want to note that when I read the closed session summary, there was a typo. The auditor's name is Bernadette Sargent, not Stinson. Stinson is the name of the firm. So we will make sure that the clerk makes that adjustment in the version of the closed session summary that is posted. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, and to our residents and guests this evening. I was honored this morning to have opportunity to join Councilmember Westlake and Councilmember Dibala in the Montgomery County MML Chapter update that was provided. It's a great coming together of elected and appointed officials. Among other things, we had a healthy discussion regarding the immigration enforcement activities that have been occurring and importantly, our internal and external communications. And we're going to be doing some information sharing and that with regards to that. I believe it was mentioned earlier that the Ward Six Public Safety Meeting link, if it's, I believe it's already on the webpage? Okay, so my report is already dated. I said it was about to come, but also social media is another place that folks can look for it. Due to the overwhelming volume of requests to receive toys from our toy drive this year, this is from the police department, "We have reached our maximum capacity and have closed our application page. We know this may be disappointing for some and we want you to know how truly grateful we are for the trust and hope our community places in this program. Our team is committed to ensuring that every child already registered will receive support this holiday season. If you are in a position to give to the toy drive, donations are deeply appreciated and will go directly towards helping local families. You heard me share that our applications have closed, but we have only made that choice after more than doubling the number of children we are helping, from 200 last year to 400 this year. Your donation of new unwrapped toys and gift cards will help bring holiday joy to local children and families in need. While we deeply appreciate your generosity, used toys cannot be accepted. Donation drop-off locations are Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department at 7201 Carroll Avenue and the Tacoma Park Police Department at 7500 Maple Avenue here at the Community Center." Another alternative to dropping off toys is this year, we're making it easier than ever. We can pick, you can pick one toy from our Amazon wishlist and help us make a child's holiday brighter. Just look for the Wish link on the police webpage and it will ship directly to us. If you're donating a gift card, please place it in an envelope addressed to Lieutenant Cynthia Williams, Toy Drive, and drop it off at the police department administrative window. The Toy Drive Collection ends on December 22nd. Thank you for being part of a community filled with kindness, generosity, and heart. Together, we continue to make a meaningful difference. The first full week of December is Older Driver Safety Awareness Week. Older Driver Safety Awareness Week highlights the vital role that mobility and transportation play to keep older adults active in their communities. The Observance recommends that during the first week in December, loved ones of older drivers express concern for their safety. The American Occupational Therapy Association initiated Older Driver Safety Awareness Week in 2009. The month of December was chosen as a way for families to discuss driver safety with their older loved ones during holiday get-togethers. The police department is still collecting coats for the winter coat drive through December 19th to give warmth to those who need it. A large box is located in the lobby of the Tacoma Park Police Department at 7500 Maple Avenue here. The Tacoma Park Police Department will ensure that they are given to those in need during and after the drive. The Tacoma Park Police and Inova Blood Drive Services have teamed up again to host a Tacoma Park Community Blood Drive on Saturday, December 6th between 11:30 AM and 4:30 PM. Your selfless act of donating blood can help save lives and it only takes a short amount of time. Let's come together as a community to positively impact the health and well-being of those in need. If you need help to register, please email Catherine Tunis at tacoma park blood drive at gmail dot com. We hope to see you at the Tacoma Park Municipal Center at 7500 Maple Avenue, Azzalia Room, second floor. And again, this is on Saturday, December 6th. Get ready for a festive and fun-filled game night with Santa on December 16th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We're excited to, once again, as the police department partner with Chuck E. Cheese in Tacoma Park, bring an evening full of holiday cheer. Join us for pizza, soft drinks, special goodie bags, and of course, the star of the season, Santa himself. Our SNAP drive has ended, but our heartfelt thanks go out to our incredible community for your overwhelming generosity during our SNAP food drive. Your donations will directly support families in need, ensuring they have access to nutritious meals during challenging times. In less than two weeks, we collected enough food to fill more than two large bins for Tommy's pantry. That's truly impressive. We are continually inspired by the compassion and support shown by our residents. Because of you, we're able to make a meaningful difference together. Thank you for stepping up, sharing kindness, and helping our neighbors when it matters Finally, from the police department, a new stop sign has been installed at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. Please use extra caution as everyone adjusts to this change and help us keep that neighborhood safe by coming to a full stop. Thank you for your cooperation in keeping our community safe. And from my office, I just had a couple shout-outs real quick. One is, I just want to give some recognition to any and all city employees that had to work on Thanksgiving Day or otherwise over the holiday break. That of course would include the police department, staff, Public Works, and I believe IT was a little bit busy over that period of time. And if I've missed any department or employees by mention, I apologize, but I'll say an all-encompassing thank you to any and all of you, you know who you are, if you had to come in and work over the Thanksgiving holiday break. We don't take you for granted and we very much appreciate it. And finally, it was alluded to before, the Ward Six Traffic Study Presentation the other evening. Want to just do a quick, specific shout-out to HCD, to Public Works, and to the IT staff that were involved in presenting that. That includes Casey Ann Webly, our transit planner, Devin McNally, who's our Director of Housing and Community Development, Roz Grigsby, Alvaro Bien, and others that were involved in putting this together. And it was a great example, in my opinion, of initial engagement in terms of outreach and then in participation. We had some good participation in person and online. I think the presentation- I think the presentation and content was really good. Staff has worked very well with a consultant, and we have a great consultant. Generated quite a bit of information and a lot to think about as we continue in the course of this study, certainly looking at options. And I thought it was, from an engagement standpoint, very important that we, the staff directly engaged the residents, all the residents that were involved in the meeting, in asking for their feedback directly on specific options that were presented during the session. And finally, none of that could have been, none of this really could be done completely without the help from IT in broadcasting it, both the prep, the execution, and the takedown of all the equipment. This involved a lot of time and planning and effort, a lot of attention during the course of that meeting. So sincere thank you to any of these and all of these employees that helped pull this event off. We're very proud to be able to bring outreach like this into wards and will continue to do it throughout the city. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to our work session this evening. Perfect. All right, so, just as a quick reminder, there's been a lot of work that has led up to the conversation that I'm hoping we'll have today. What I'm hoping we can do, today, woo, tonight. My hope is, we're not going to be here all night, but you know, you never know with these kinds of things. But the hope is that we can kind of facilitate the conversation around what we are intent behind some of the responses to the council survey, any other points that folks would like to share, just as a way for us to establish the foundation of consensus that could ultimately be reflected in the budget priorities document. So when I said there's materials that folks should have available to them, one is last year's budget priorities resolution. The other, everyone should have received the presentation that was held before the Thanksgiving break on the council budget survey results, as well as materials from the community survey results. And also, just as a reminder, we kind of talked through these a little bit during the session we had with D-20, but we also have our legislative priorities, but more importantly, our council priorities, which also we can use to help guide us through identifying projects and needs. So, one of the things that I think will be important for us to do to start is to kind of lay the foundation of what our council budget priorities. And so we undertake this exercise as a way to provide some guardrails, major guardrails for staff as they are developing the budget. And so what we're hoping to do, and what we've done in prior budget priorities, is to provide guidance on what we anticipate or what we would like for the city manager's budget to show us in terms of the tax rate, our reserve rate, et cetera. That may include things like railroad and utility rates, which we are asking for the city manager as they are preparing their budget to keep these things at the forefront of their minds in terms of what ultimately comes back to us. The other reason for the council priorities, budget priorities, is to help us as a council to identify information needed as part of the budget process. It could be the case that there are some things that we may be considering, but we don't have enough information to make the decision one way or the other at this time. And so it is helpful, and what has been done in the past, is to be able to communicate to staff what some of those topics are. For example, during the last budget priorities discussion, one thing that did come up was the railroad utility tax and what that meant and whether or not adjustments or the like would be advisable, what would be some of the positive or negative externalities associated with making any adjustments. And staff then came to us during some of the work sessions of the budget to walk us through what those issues were and give us points for consideration, so that ultimately when we were deliberating on the budget, we had that information at the forefront of our minds that would enable us to make a decision. And then the other goal, or what we're trying to do as part of the city council budget priorities, is to really try to identify projects or initiatives that the council agreed that should be a priority to address in the city manager's budget. It's really a way for us to identify, for example, we really mean we want to continue to work on the rec center. We want to see something in the budget. We really mean that we want some items in the budget regarding electrification. We really mean, right, so, we may not be able to think through, and it may not be feasible, but at this stage of the process, the goal is to at least provide city staff with a heads up about what those important projects or initiatives, as we see them today, are, so that as they are developing the budget, they're able to consider and plan basically work sessions or items for inclusion in the budget that we can ultimately make decisions on as we're finalizing the budget. So I want to make sure that folks are clear on what the budget priorities are, right? And so I do also want to take a minute to make sure that everyone understands what the budget priorities are not. The budget priorities do not establish the final tax rate for the budget. And I have FY '26, that should be FY '27, sorry, it was a typo, I was typing pretty fast. But it doesn't establish the final tax rate. The final tax rate for our budget is established after we receive the city manager's budget. We have deliberated, we have work sessions, we do whatever we need to do to finalize the budget. It is not necessarily the case that what is agreed to or what is desired as part of the council budget priorities is what ultimately is what is reflected when we are finalizing the budget. And so I do think that that is something very important for the public and for colleagues to understand. We do not, at this time, have to make a final decision about what we want the budget, the rate to be. The purpose of this is to have, identify to staff what the starting point is, but as you all may have seen during the last budget cycle, there's a lot of things that happen over reconciliation, and as things kind of go back and forth, it is not the goal tonight or next week to say, this is the tax rate and this is what we want it to be, because we don't know until we see a final budget. The budget priorities also do not identify all of the projects for inclusion in the budget. The budget priorities are focused on things like priority projects for the council, but it is not all encompassing and may not include certain things that may come up over the course of the budget development process. And so again, I don't want the general public or others to believe that if it wasn't something that was listed explicitly as part of a council budget priority, that it should not be reflected in the budget. There's a whole slew of things that come in and out of our budget through the reconciliation process. The purpose of this discussion is to make sure that we're able to identify what those priority projects or initiatives are, that we want to make sure that we are either included as part of the city manager's budget to us, or is a topic of a work session that we discuss as we are developing and finalizing the budget. The budget priorities also do not have complete information about the upcoming budget available at the time of development and therefore are subject to change. And I think this is really, really important, because there's a number of things that we don't have right now. We don't know what our tax due reimbursement amount is. We don't know what is some of the things that will need to be deliberated through the county, like mental health counselors, they're going through their budget process, at the same time we're going through ours. There's a lot of unknowns that may relate to things that are important to the council, but we don't know them at this time. And so I just want to make sure that folks understand that, you know, all of this is subject to change, because it is an iterative process, but the goal truly is to provide staff with a general idea of what we're looking for in terms of what they present to us as that first draft or that initial draft of the budget. All right, so, I know that we had some public comments this evening that was asking for, you know, discussion about why do you feel, the way that you feel about certain things.
As we're moving into the body of this, I did have a couple of preliminary questions. Would it be all right to ask them now?
Sure.
So, thank you for reminding the public that the tax rate is not set in any budget priorities resolution. In last year's resolution, it did say, and be it further resolved, that the council directs the manager, I'm paraphrasing, to bring forward a proposed budget. In that case, it was with a no change in the tax rate. So, is that something that is customarily done in the resolution?
Yeah, so, and that is one of the items that we will discuss. So, staff generally, it's helpful for them to know generally where we're leaning in terms of a tax rate, even though we may not know exactly what that tax rate is, and in terms of what they present to us. So, the purpose of that language last year was to say, assume, it's basically just assume that we're going to, we want the tax rate to be the same in terms of what you present back to us. Now again, as we were deliberating, that could have totally changed, but in terms of what they presented to us, we wanted to make sure that, you know, that council had some say. In the past, what happened more was the city manager would basically keep in account of what it was that we wanted done, and maybe where we were leaning, but they ultimately presented a budget based on how much it would cost to do the things we wanted. So what ultimately happened was you would always get a city manager's budget that in many cases would propose a tax increase. And then the onus would be on the council.
You mean a tax rate increase?
A tax rate increase. And then the onus would be on the council to figure out where to cut. As part of this new process, and the reason we have the budget priorities, is to say, generally, based on council consensus, we don't want to immediately start in the hole. So maybe the council may say, you know what, we want, just keep us where we are right now, and then we would have the ability to decide whether or not we want to increase the tax rate or decrease the tax rate based on what we ultimately decide in terms of the programs or the policies and things. But that is, that's the purpose of this, to allow for us to have a bit of a starting point.
Okay, so one of the things we'll be discussing is where we're leaning on that. Yeah, my other question, and thank you, and my other question was, it's a budget priorities resolution, is it possible for a council to say, we also want you to deprioritize one, two, three, or four things, which can make it a lot easier for the manager? Because I think sometimes if a council puts forward, say, five priorities, the manager's left wondering, well, what needs to shift to do that? So, I would like our group to consider, if we can come to consensus on some depriorities, I don't know if there's a word in the English language for that, you know, then maybe that would be a good support for this process.
Oh yeah, and you're speaking my language, because this is like one of the first figures that's on the slide right now, so that we can start having these conversations. I thought it would be beneficial for us to start with initiatives or key projects first, and then move into questions regarding tax rate or other kinds of reserve rates and those kinds of things. So what you all see here is the feedback that was part of the presentation that we received a couple of weeks ago, based on the council survey. And I should have switched these around, but the item on the right, the city services, expand, reduce, or maintain. So, based on these points, it seemed that four council members wanted to maintain the current level of city services, two wanted to reduce, one wanted to expand. And then, but when we looked at the, should we add resources to the budget for those residents impacted by federal actions, we overwhelmingly said yes, except there was one council member that said no. And so I think it might be useful for us to just have a general discussion about services and whether or not there's desire amongst council for staff to... They're always considering cost cutting measures. I don't think that folks should assume that they're not. But if there are specific city services that folks had in mind in terms of reduction, or if there are specific types of resources that members of council are considering that need to be added, it would be helpful for us to have those conversations now. I have some discussion points at the end of this section, but I want to just kind of make sure that folks are aware, because we'll spend quite a bit of time discussing. And another thing that I did want to make sure that folks were remembering is part of the prior budget resolution, we identified council priorities that we really wanted to make sure we're moving forward. One was, and these are our priorities, maintain our commitment to be in a welcoming and inclusive community while residents experience a sense of safety and belonging, establish the city's long-term fiscal sustainability strategy, ensure a range of safe, high-quality, affordable, and stable housing options are equitably available in neighborhoods throughout the community, advance city communications with residents, and adopt innovative culturally appropriate initiatives to improve public engagement and collaboration with residents, and prioritize climate mitigation and resilience policies and programs that have the greatest impact on meeting our net zero and adoption goals while contributing to equity and other city goals. So these were the priority of the priority in terms of our 2025 to 2026 council priorities as part of that resolution. All right, so now let's talk. Based on the city council survey results, do we want the city manager's budget to include an increase in the level of services provided? And I will go back to the slide, which I think is the most telling, and then we can also talk about any priorities that folks want to or think we should prioritize. Councilmember Hanzak.
Can I just ask, do we have copies of our own responses that have been given to us that I missed, just in case we think we answered something, but maybe we're mistaken?
I...
I'm sorry, I'm just, yeah, I want to make sure we're coming from a...
We can provide them, I can't download them now.
Yeah, I understand.
But I can get it to you tomorrow, if that would work.
Thanks.
Does everybody want theirs as well? Okay.
All right. So, the folks who remember, Councilmember Landman.
So, this was one of those questions where there was like a sort of a mega question, and that was a very difficult question to answer in a useful way, because city services encompasses everything, and you can't answer that question with one yes or no answer if what you want to do is... if what you want to do is, as you said in your answer, that you were quoted, you want to potentially reallocate a limited quantity of resources, perhaps prioritizing different things. And so I think the answer that I gave was something along the lines of, I don't like this question because I want to spend more on certain things and potentially less on others, and so therefore there is no good way to answer this question, which wasn't a very good answer probably. But I probably said no because I don't want to spend more on everything. Or, and also, I have a problem trying to figure out of what we, when we say city services. For example, we wanted, we made a special effort to make more funding available for certain programs that we have, but they didn't necessarily involve, for example, additional services that we provide by FTE, for example. We have a set of funds available, grant funds that can be given out that we can make available, but those wouldn't necessarily require additional personnel resources. And so that might affect the way that funding is allocated in our budget. And one of the questions that troubled me in trying to figure out how to look at next year's budget, I don't have an answer for this, but it's something that I think we need to look at closely. Our county has been coming up with a number of different programs that actually duplicate ones that we have been looking at for the city, particularly for like rent and for utilities to supplement resources for people who are hard-hit, immigrant families and other families that are hard-hit by the current situation, and for federal employees, and have just, for example, sent us a note this week about additional grant funds available for community school students whose families are in need. And I want to make it an extra special effort to make sure that we take advantage of those county funds, rather than just immediately stepping up with our city funds and make ours the secondary place that people go, use our resources to direct people to county resources, and have ours be the secondary resources that we spend only when county resources don't fill the bill. And maybe that's more personnel-heavy than it is grant fund-heavy, but, you know, be efficient in making use of our city funds only as a gap filler and not duplicate county resources. So I don't think that constitutes an expansion of city services, but maybe a judicious expansion of grant funds that don't require that we expand staff to provide additional services. I don't know how that fits into, how you're going to fit that in this little wedgie picture here, Mayor, that's your job.
Madam Mayor, I can just clarify on the question itself. It did say, and that point is very valid, I mean, you have to simplify to a great degree with a survey.
I know, otherwise you'd have a 25,000-page questionnaire.
Exactly. And to try to address that to some degree, when we designed the survey to ask these questions, whether keep the same, decrease, or increase, when it came to programming, we said, program, would you like to increase, decrease, or keep the same programs and potentially related personnel? So I think we weren't trying to communicate an assumption that all, that any increase in programs or an emphasis in certain programming would necessarily require any additional staff.
Thank you. I didn't mean to be a complainer, but I just, it was only one little answer you could give. I was troubled by trying to figure out how to answer it.
Thank you, councilmember Landman. And that's one of the reasons why we're having this conversation, because, you know, I think it is important for folks to kind of understand, and for all of us to understand, what we were thinking as we were all individually deliberating on responses, because people may have interpreted the asks or the questions slightly differently. Councilmember Dabala.
So I was looking at it similarly, that if, that generally speaking, on balance, to have, to maintain services, there might be within that adjustments, slight adjustments to expand something or to reduce something else. So specifically, that's how I wound up in the yes box with adding resources to the budget for those affected by federal actions, as I explained earlier. In my mind, I was thinking that could come out of some of the money we set aside last year to do just this. So I saw them as not contradicting each other.
Thank you, councilmember. I just want to make sure, so you didn't see, you saw this as distinct, you saw the federal action pieces distinct from the current city services?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the time to say that I promised a while ago that I would want to add to the other thing I want to add to the, maybe this is premature?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Yeah, never mind.
Councilmember Hanzak.
I wish that I had my answers in front of me, but I know that I vacillated on the question on the left side here about adding resources to the budgets for those residents impacted by federal actions. Unfortunately, as much as I think it would be nice to do more of what we're doing, I really think that it's not sustainable. I think this is not COVID times. I think that we're going to have, we're going to see contraction in the market. We have three more years at least of this particular federal government, and we have in that time period a massive loss of jobs. So I think our role needs to be to, you know, slow down the rapid pace of the impact on our local economy, but I think we're going to have to get pretty creative. And frankly, I think we've got a lot of good programming in place already, so that's why I said maintain our level of city service. Now, if we needed to, for example, if we finding that we have so much demand for recreation scholarships, for example, okay, then we should have that discussion, and maybe it would be in the form of a budget amendment, if we, or maybe we would run out of money. We already have eviction funding. We have, and as councilmember Landman pointed out, there are a number of, you know, county-level resources that are being made available. We have done a great job with our food distribution grants. Do we want to continue that? You know, I think those right now are adequate, very much so. And now, if SNAP retracts dramatically, again, this is, that's a big deal. So I think a lot of this is an uncertainty, but if I had to make the decision today, I would stay the course with where we're at, not necessarily in FTE, but we'll probably get to that, but in level of service that we're currently getting with our dollars. And it is a little bit tricky because we've got the ARPA money that's still playing a role in certain aspects, so the devil's in the details.
May I share one factual thing? During COVID, the same thing happened. The city put programs out, and then the county caught up, and then we were able to back off. So I meant to say that when I, because you're right. Maybe we're not backing off, maybe we're not expanding it as much, but we've seen this movie before.
Yeah. No, councilmember Dabala is absolutely right. We were able to get started faster. The municipalities were able to get money out the door faster than the county. Councilmember Schlegel.
Thanks. And while we're on this question about residents impacted by federal actions, one area that I just don't know a lot about is federal actions impacting our LGBTQ+ residents. And there was one of the narrative comments that called for us to be thinking about that. And, you know, I don't know, I couldn't see from the narrative comments who it was, but I think it would be good, right while we're on this, to pause and think about what, are there other things that we'd be wanting to do that would be budget-specific, not policy, but budget-specific, that might be needed in that area?
May I respond to that? Spoiler, it was me that I put those comments. I've been having a lot of conversations with residents, both trans adults and parents of trans kids, and I do think that there are some ways that we can, as a city, better support that community that is very, very villainized at the moment. But I believe most of those would be lower dollar amounts and more one-off kind of things, so I'm hoping we can find ways to fit those in. I have not, nothing has come up that has been like, well, if we did this, but it would cost half a million dollars. Like, there's nothing even close to that, but would still make a big impact in that community. And I'll also clarify that, that, because you said the LGBTQ+ community, and we do care about all of them, the trans community within that, or I'm saying, like, I am elevating the trans community within that because there-
Thank you.
It's a scary thing to be right now. Yes, yeah, it's really, like, as a woman married to a woman, I know that there's some stuff to be scared of. It doesn't even compare to folks that have a trans family member.
Thank you, councilmember Westlake. Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, I don't know how we might be structuring this, but I just wanted to throw out there, and maybe this is a way to get conversations going across different topic areas. Like, as I said when the D20 delegation was here, I don't think this is a time to back away from our climate commitment, and I'm curious to hear how colleagues feel about that. But it might be, based on what Delegate Charcutin said, that we would say, we are going to focus, say, on this community choice aggregation program right now, or something like that, to leverage what the county's doing.
Seeing if there's any thoughts. I think, I will say, for me, one of the, I was in the maintain group, and I was in the yes group for the federal actions. I'm just a more conservative budgeter anyway, but the, the big thing for me, and the reason I was, I kind of kept things at maintain, was because there is just a lot of things, at least for this first initial cut, that would be, I wasn't immediately seeing where we would cut. I wasn't immediately seeing what services we could get rid of. I do recognize that there are ad hoc projects that were added to the FY26 budget, but there, you know, there was a couple of things, you know? We did some things like increasing the number, rightfully so, I agree, we should do it, but we increased say amount for the community grants, we increased, we did the rent stabilization study, we did, there was just a lot of things like that that were included in the budget. Now, is that going to get us to the point where we, you know, yeah, where we're reducing city services, which I saw more as some of these core business operations that we perform as a city than our residents expect? What would I, what would I cut? Nothing. What more do we need? Nothing. Do I think, though, that there could be some presentations back to the council about ways to, cost-saving measures that are proposed by staff on some of these core functions, that we could either, even if we can't adopt them under this budget, but could be reviewed and kind of brought back to us for implementation for future budgets? Yes. In terms of the federal actions, I agree with the points that were raised about, you know, as the county and others get up to snuff, get up to speed and offer certain services. I still feel like we need this rainy day fund because there's so much unpredictability in terms of who's the next target. And so I agree with councilmember Westlake's point about our trans residents and what we might need to do. We don't know yet, because it hasn't really hit hard in certain communities as much as like the immigration enforcement has hit, as much as things like the SNAP benefits and eligibility for social service programs that could really restrict the number of our residents who maybe don't have papers or are fearful, even if they have papers, of applying for this stuff. So in my mind, I do think that, or for federal workers that have lost their jobs, and because of the monies that they've made to date over the course of the year, they may not meet certain qualifications for other types of social service programs, right? Or that maybe they need job trainings, these kinds of things, which are provided by the county, but maybe we need to partner to try to bring some of those things. Who wants to go to Rockville? No offense to Rockville, but that's a haul, right? So it's, you know, those are some of the things that we may need to make sure that we have some resources in the budget in order to make sure that staff have what they need, if they're at capacity, and in order to do those things, they need to have some outside support. Do I know right now what that dollar amount is? No. I think that's something that we would probably have to iterate on over the course of the budget development process. But for the purpose of the priorities, I would say, what I would hope to see from staff would be, give me a budget with keeping what we do right now, do some legwork and figure out, you know, what capacity we have or might need, if in the event that we might need to provide some, either keep some of our uncertainty reserves available for what may happen with federal action, with federal actions, or if there's some ways in which we can partner with the county or do some, come up with some program initiatives and estimates for what those would be in terms of some of the immediate needs that we are recognizing that's happening in terms of what's happening at the federal level. Councilmember Dabala.
So responding to councilmember Schlegel's question about climate, which I, maybe this is too detailed, but I was thinking that during COVID, we kind of lightened up because we had other things on our mind, and that we need to return to that, or we're not going to come anywhere close to our goals. We are not going to be the only ones in that boat. The county's going to be in that boat too. So using some of the, cooperating with the county and working together, I think is already happening, relying on the county to do things that we had originally planned to do ourselves, I think is not a good idea. I don't know if that answers your question. And so to that end, one of the things that I was going to add in the programmatic part of the budget resolution that we will wind up with, had to do with what I brought up when we talked about electrifying vehicles, to look, to ask the staff to think through what investments, if any, need to be made in the next five years to be able to move EV charging and EV purchasing ahead. And it may turn out that it's not very much at all, because we've just gotten grants for several chargers, but to find out what that is roughly, and if that's a significant amount of money we need to put. So that was one thing I was going to propose. I agreed with what you said about focusing our climate on the most vulnerable, climate work on the most vulnerable, and I think we're already doing it. And I, I don't think CCA work, which I'm already following, and I welcome help, is something that takes a lot of staff time or a lot of money, which staff time is money. It's been more of a council thing and resident thing up till now. Did I miss anything on climate? I think that might be it. So in terms of this green box, I'm still back with, what are the things that we might need to do that the county isn't offering, or that we need to supplement to help residents who are impacted by federal actions? I also am not seeing a lot over here, as I said, as I was quoted earlier by a resident, I don't see big places to cut. So I'm, for the purposes of this exercise, I'm good with maintain. Does that help at all?
Does. Councilmember Landman.
Councilmember Lamb?
Just, first, on the, I want to make two points. One, with respect to what you said, and the other, on the environmental side, when you were talking about, about how to approach the, the issue of new things that come up, I'd sort of like to flip the script in a way where what we say in the event of, of looking at new program, or new needs as a result of federal action, that we, that the process begins with looking to what the resources are that the county and state are offering, and then, and, and the assumption being that, that those are the places where we begin, and then we, we, we backfill as needed, because I agree with you that, that, that when, when this began, we had to step in, in an emergency, and, but that we, that thing, that we have in a way, been, events have caught up with us now, and now the state has stood up programs, the county has stood up programs, and they are better, to the extent that anybody's financed, that's getting to be less and less, but to the extent that that's the case, they're better, they're deeper pockets than we are. And they also draw from a larger, you know, catchment area, so even when it comes to things like jobs and job opportunities, you know, even at a county level, it's such a wider job pool and opportunity pool, that it's really a better place to look for, for resourcing. So, I think SNAP is a good example. I mean, we cannot possibly fill that, that hole, so, you know, we really have to think in those terms. So, I'd, I'd like us to, that, for that to be kind of the, a staff priority that we communicate, a council priority that we communicate to the staff, that, that would be the starting point for thinking about these challenges, is that we begin by thinking about what are the resources that are available from elsewhere that the city could draw from, as opposed to, how do we stand up a program of our own? And then, on the, the other point, if I may, just talk about one other thing, which is in, in, in the context of the environmental issues that we face, we have, you know, taken delegated authority for stormwater management, whether that was a good idea or not, that's where things stand right now, and we had, you know, in last July, I think it was, we had the flood, which we're still dealing with here in the city council, or the, the community center, and, you know, have, had to, we do have, we did have insurance, which was lucky, and not lucky, I'm sure it was skilled decision-making, that had, got us that insurance policy, but we're still dealing with the aftermath of that, because of the complexities of insurance companies and everything else. But so many people who live in this city experienced a lot of damage from that, and a lot of that has to do with the incredibly inadequate stormwater infrastructure, that's not our fault, but we have to deal with the impact of that. And I know that the Department of Public Works has been juggling their budget to try and deal with elements of that that were not previously accounted for in their plan, because some of those problems occurred in places that they had not foreseen, and the new emergency management, the county emergency management plan, or mapping that they did, identified massive potential risk in the Sligo Creek watershed. And so, I don't know what financial risks we have as a community, but I think they're a lot more substantial than are necessarily reflected in our current budget, and I don't know how we plan for that exactly. But area-wide stormwater management, especially for flood control purposes, is the future for dealing with that. We can't possibly deal with it on a 2.2 square mile basis, because most of the water is coming from somewhere else, and it's all going somewhere else. And so, I think we have to prioritize flood management, water management, in the coming years, but not necessarily by putting a lot of additional money into it right now, but we have to prioritize how we are going to prepare ourselves for that, and it's, you know, it's in our immediate future. So, I don't, staff-wise, or in some other way, or in, in planning, we have to make room for that in our, in our, in our plans, and, you know, hopefully, that will be through programs, pilot programs financed through state and county, and perhaps other grant money, or, you know, shared resources from places like the, you know, Corps of Engineers or something, because the cost is going to be substantial to, to mitigate or adapt to the coming water, water levels going bigger.
Councilmember DiBala?
Yeah, to, just to, to add to that, I don't know if this goes in the resolution, or if we just ask, but there has been a lot of internal work on the flooding and cooperating with, and working with the county, and what their flood mapping is doing, and how, how to come if it's in, and there's been work on our stormwater system and mapping out where the capital, where the, where the problems are, and maybe it's time to have a refresher for the council, to see where the, where the, the gaps still are, to see what questions of the sort that Councilmember Lamb had raised are already in process of being answered, and whether there are still gaps that we need to focus on. Does that help?
I think, I think we definitely could use an update. I think probably we need to hear from the people that did the risk, the, the new flood mapping.
The county.
The county mapping, I mean, you've seen it, right?
Yes.
So, you know, there's a lot more coming. I don't know whether, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea for us to all hear about that. I don't actually know what the budget implications would be in the short term. I don't, I, I know that they have, in the Department of Public Works, they have a long list of needs that far exceeds the dollars available, and I, and I think that they have to repurpose some of their plans this current fiscal year for the problems that arose unexpectedly. So, anyway, I don't exactly know how that fits into this.
But I do just want to make sure, because, you know, I'm listening and taking notes and kind of hearing that when we go back and start talking about maybe specific council priorities that are important, if addressing climate mitigation and resilience is a priority, we don't necessarily need to figure out the nuance of what that looks like, but we can identify within the budget priorities document that this is something we really, this is one priority we really, because our priorities, we have a lot of them, but this is a priority area that, and stormwater mitigation, we can kind of drill down to cherry pick the specific strategy that we, we want staff to focus on, and make sure that that is something that they're clear, that of our big climate mitigation priority, this particular strategy related to resilience and stormwater management is something that we, we want to prioritize for the upcoming budget. And that will kind of allow for some work to float to the top, and the rest will float to the bottom, and that kind of gives them a little bit of some feedback in terms of where we would want them to prioritize in one area, deprioritizing some others within that priority.
So, I'm not, I'm not actually sure whether I, I am ready to answer, to say it's a budget priority, but it's more like I'm looking ahead to, well, obviously, we need the money that we need for stormwater management, but to know more, to learn more about what the, the new risk, risk evaluations suggest ought to be our spending in the future, to get, to have the planning for, the information gathering and planning for it, be the short-term priority with an eye to it being, you know, to being better informed about what our long-term spending might need to be. So, the prepar, at least the preparation would be the priority for, for the current fiscal, upcoming fiscal year.
Deputy City Manager, you bank, so I see your light.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind council of two things, well, tell you one thing, and then remind you of another. The first, that our stormwater program is managed out of an enterprise fund, so it's not directly related to general fund, which means it's not directly impacting our tax rate. Second thing is, my understanding from our public works director is that a lot of the limitations related to the stormwater work that we can do now is not so much a funding limitation, it is a staff limitation. We have one civil engineer, can only do but so much design work. We also utilize two consultants on a regular basis to supplement our internal capacity, but again, that work is funded out of the enterprise fund, and even those relationships require some kind of management internally of our, from our staff. So, it's, it's not so much a, if we had more money, we'd be able to do more, it's more about the staff capacity to manage additional projects.
May I respond to that? Don't we currently, like, spend some of the stormwater management money that we have on that person, but that person does other work as well? Like, we, we split the time of that engineer between two programs?
Yes, the budget for the engineer, as well as our construction manager, I can't remember the exact percentage, I think, I want to say it's 2575, but there's some roadway and street and sidewalk-related work that they also do.
May I, may I say one more thing about this? Just that, for, just for example, there was one year, a few years ago, where we felt that it was, as a council, that it was important to dip into the general fund in order to fund us more work in the flooding area. So, that, that's certainly an option, it's not one I would, at the moment, recommend, but, but otherwise, it is within the bucks that we've got. And we could consider raising the fee again, if we need more money, but I don't know that we do. I think you were right to say there are some earlier questions that we want to address.
Councilmember Schlegel?
This is just brief. I, I think that, I don't know when it was that the council last did, like, an extended session convened as the Stormwater Management Board, but there, there are so many questions percolating, that's a bad, the problem is, things aren't percolating, I guess. There, there's so many things going on, where the county has new things coming in, and I know that it's, it's a little bit hybrid, because we need to think about funding some staff through the fees, but then some staff exists because of the, the normal operating budget. But I, I think it would be a good idea for us to kind of move this offline, if we could find some space for, for a bona fide, you know, fuller meeting, and maybe consultation with some people as a stormwater management board.
So, even though we are in the code, as, in, in order for us to vote on stormwater budget and all of that stuff, we have to convene as a stormwater management board, we don't have to be the stormwater management board to discuss stormwater management issues. So, it sounds like folks would be interested in having a, a work session during the budget as it relates to some of the aspects of the stormwater budget, which we do, but we can be a little bit more specific in terms of what we're looking for in, in, in that presentation versus the general overview, which typically happens of what the stormwater management, what the stormwater budget is, proposed projects that are included. It sounds like there may be some questions about other aspects of funding and capacity for additional work. Am I summarizing that?
Okay.
So, we will make sure that that is an item that could be added as part of the work sessions during the budget. I would like to, oh, Councilmember Westlake, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hanzak, did you?
This is a little bit of a different topic, different priorities, are we ready to move to a different priority?
I, I would like for us to take a quick post check, based on discussion right now, because I kind of need it, as we're working through the draft resolution. Do we want the city manager's budget to include an increase in the level of services provided? We, we've talked about the options of reduce, expand, maintain. So, so, I just want to generally get a feel before we get, get into specifics, because it's possible that you could say, hey, I want us to focus on stormwater, but I also want us to keep what we have, and that would signal to them that there needs to be some, some, some work done behind the scenes in order to get that to us. I'm just trying to make sure that I can get a little bit of direction before we start talking about the, the specific one-offs. Can we do a quick hand vote? Because I know, I don't know if our, where we are is, where we are now is in alignment with what the survey results were, in terms of what we would like for staff generally, in terms of city services, like the basic stuff that they do regularly.
So, are, are you proposing that we hand vote on the following? That generally, we want to maintain, I'm taking maintain, because four people voted for it, services in, in the budget, but we might have specific exceptions that we might list later on?
Correct. So, the-
That could be up or down.
The prior budget resolution included, included that we wanted services, basic city services maintained, but we also highlighted areas where we wanted additional priorities in terms of our priorities or other items. Okay? So, all those in favor of including in the resolution for city services to be maintained at current levels? Can I just seize a quick, quick set of hands? Okay. All right. Generally speaking? All right. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay. This just helps me to-
Six?
It is, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five. Five. And again, the, I know the devils will be in the details of the resolution, but this will help me when it comes to-
Just, just so my colleagues understand, I, I couldn't raise a hand on that, because it's just so broad, as Councilmember Lamb had said, that, you know, I, there's a lot of things I want to see maintained, but I just, I don't know, as you said, the devil's in detail, so I'm, I'm open to things being reduced if, if that doesn't do, you know, significant harm and allows us to continue to pursue priorities.
Okay. So, thank you all for, for indulging me on, on that discussion. So, let's keep talking about council priorities that we want to make sure that are addressed in the FY27 budget, and any new initiatives, are there new items that would be useful to have staff plan for in terms of the FY27 budget? You get to say your things now. Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that kind of jumped out at me in our meeting yesterday with Director Clark, and talking about so many of the youth outreach programs that he's looking to do, and haven't been able to do, was staffing. And he mentioned a position, a part-time position that he's having a hard time filling, that would immensely help with our team programs, but it requires for a person who's 21 years of age, who, and, and the hourly wage is, is very low. So, that's just, just one of the thoughts I had that came out of that meeting yesterday. So, I know that there are some places where we need increase, maybe FTEs or, or wages, and then there's some places we probably can reduce, I don't see, from where I look at, you know, our city staff and how hard they're working in so many areas, but I could be missing some things, but it's just a thought that came out of the meeting yesterday.
Thank you, that's helpful. In terms of, and, and just Councilmember Gilbert, so you know, sometimes those kinds of things also will, will come up during the budget reconciliation, where it may mean pushing for a pay adjustment for a position, or increasing funding for a position. But I, I do just want to, to note that I, I think that there has been some questions regarding staffing generally. I know that the, during the public comments, the ARPA positions came up, and so, if, if there are, if there is a desire to make a note regarding overall FTE stance, you know, in terms of whether or not there is a desire for there to be an increase, decrease, or maintenance of the FTE levels that are presented in the budget, that, that is something that would be useful to know as well. I'm, I'm going to go in the order, and I apologize, because I know I just posed a question, but I already have lights going.
I had turned my light off, if you recall, because you said it wasn't time.
Oh. But, no, 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 you can-
Yeah, is it mine? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I, the priority I wanted to speak to without, without specificity, and I apologize for that, but I just want to give a perspective on this to share it with you all, and this be heard by the staff. So, is, I think that what Delegate Moon was talking about is really essential to the lens that I'm going to come at this from. that I'm going to come at this from is, right now, I see us in a time of extraordinary fiscal crisis that is looming. It's sort of, we're on the precipice of it, uh, big things are happening, and I see a lot of houses for sale. I have no idea how many houses are up for sale or people are moving out. We know people are leaving housing. I have actually been hearing about it within our apartment community as well, that people are leaving. They're not actually able to fill things. I have a lot, and, and, and Delegate Moon made me much more concerned than I was before. So I, I think, uh, the dirty underbelly, or maybe the, I'll, I'll put a positive spin on it. The positive spin is, I think that if we put a lot of emphasis as a city right now, looking towards sort of the medium and like five years out term from now, I think we really need to be thinking about attracting people to our community. People who have some means, people who have some money to spend to stay in their housing, to replace anybody who doesn't have that money anymore if they've had to move out and find jobs elsewhere, honestly. People, uh, who will think of our community as a place of safety and belonging. And I think that gets to perhaps some of the things you're thinking about. I mean, this Tacoma Park Fair is already a place where people will feel safer here than they would feel in a whole lot of other places in the country and in the world. We can really work on that, um, to really make it very attractive, um, to really make sure there are safe spaces that, and, and I think that would take the form of coming from like, um, within maybe our, our Economic Development Division, our, perhaps our housing, uh, and community, community initiatives. But, um, I mean, obviously, it's not just going to be coming from the city, but I do, I think it comes from, uh, working really hard and putting a lot of emphasis, whatever that looks like within the budgetary framework, on, um, ensuring that we're trying to attract, anyone who's going to build middle-income housing that has affordable housing options within it, but that, um, and then finding, uh, ways to make sure our, our business zones are as bright and vibrant as they can be and welcoming spaces that make people of all, uh, of very diverse walks of life feel that this is a place where they belong and can feel really comfortable. Um, and I, and I think we really need to, maybe even, I, I would invite us to have a session on that as a council. Like, what does that look like? What does Tacoma Park in this world we're living in right now need to look like to attract new residents? If, maybe similar to who's already here, but new residents to help fill some of these gaps that are very real. We won't have people to tax that can afford to pay for more stormwater infrastructure if we don't have people who have jobs here. Um, we aren't looking at the same demographics for the next five years at least of the kinds of people that are living in our community. We don't have feds, we don't have scientists, we don't have people who always, you know, who could afford, um, electric vehicles, who could afford to spend a lot of time thinking about, um, all of their, I'm not saying they're not going to be doing that, but we need, we need to bring the people who can afford to do those things here if we're going to have enough money to keep investing in the things that we still believe in. Um, I just, I think we're really looking at, at, at a real crisis of trying to change the way we've always functioned with people working for the federal government. We just don't, there are very few of those, and they're not going to be here for at least the next five years, at least.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. And I think, um, I do, um, think that economic development and, you know, the, the current climate of our city and our region, um, is an important point of discussion. How that might relate to the budget, I'm not exactly sure, but, um, in trying to, but it could be something that we can definitely add to this, to the list for, uh, a future work session with, uh, HCD, as they're, they're talking through some of the other, um, work that they're doing. Uh, Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes, um, thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. And yeah, thanks for amplifying how we're facing like a major sea change. And another facet of that is that, um, we also need to be thinking about what does it mean year to year to keep living within our means? And the good things that we want to do? How, how do we keep doing those? So, um, I, I really think one priority we must emphasize for FY27 is, is implementing those, those, that first round of performance metrics effectively so that we can really begin to see how well are our programs doing for, for our dollars? How can they, and if, if they can do better, let's fine tune them. You know, the more measures we have, the better we can, we can keep adjusting and, and shifting course as we need to over the next few years. And, you know, along those lines, it's, it, it is hard to, like, I really respect, I, I really respect and value the work that our police department does. And then it's, it's still hard to see the number that was in the presentation from the residents earlier tonight about something like five hundred seventy-three dollars per capita. And, uh, not know for sure what, what lies behind that number and how much value added are we getting? So that's why performance metrics mean so much. Because I wouldn't want to just say, oh, uh, that's, that's too high, just cut the police department, you know, by X amount and figure it out. But I do wonder, when I, when I look at the weekly crime reports, I, we all see where the crime is concentrated. And then I wonder, do we need the same level of coverage that we have in other areas? Is that keeping crime from happening in those areas to the same levels? Or is it, you know, you know, I just don't have the answers, so, um, and I, I don't mean any disrespect towards, towards our, our police officers or, or the civilians who work in that department. It's just getting metrics, I think, is a big thing for FY27 so that we can look at, at different programs, even recreation, for example, and think, hmm, I wonder, uh, maybe we want to focus it more on youth who have the hardest time getting transportation to facilities in Long Branch or Silver Spring, you know? Um, let's, for the time being, let's, you know, it would be, the more metrics we can get, I think, the better. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. And I, I see Deputy City Manager giving X light, um, followed by the City Manager. I'm just going in the order. Whoever, whoever wants to go first is fine.
Jump ball. Yeah, thank you. Uh, and I appreciate your comments. I understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Schlegel. First, I would say staff would appreciate an opportunity, of course, to look at and vet any information that's been presented to council. You know, communication just momentarily here with the chief was that he doesn't believe the financial number is accurate. So we'll, you know, we'd like to have that opportunity. I'm not saying it, it, it's accurate or inaccurate, I'd say we'd like an opportunity, you know, for the council and the public's benefit to present information on that, uh, on that element. Uh, I would also say that, uh, I, I do understand the value in performance metrics. I, I had originally recommended it to, to the council, and to your credit, you've, uh, you've funded, uh, the, the design of a program, and we're working presently, you know, we, we, as it was said in the presentation, uh, that we did this summer from the consultant, uh, MSS, that they, uh, that this happens in phases. And it takes some time to get meaningful design of those metrics, and then it takes time to develop the, um, implementation phase and how all of that goes in. And then there's also time to then, once that tool is completed, to collect the data and then ultimately have some meaningful, uh, information for you. It's also, but it's certainly not exclusively a, a, a budgetary aid. It's a, is just as much, if not more, an internal management tool. What I do want to say is that where police in particular are concerned, there, there is a plethora of data, uh, that we have available and that we frequently do share in the form of the annual report, um, and various other reports the police department does deliver and certainly can provide additional information as to how our dollars are spent, how that investment by this community and the police department is of high value. Uh, i- it, it talks about the types of programs and services that we do. It talks about specifically how we implement, uh, with those dollars. It also indicates that we get a fair amount of outside funding. As, as this community gets a SAP grant, a Special Appropriations Program grant from the state that's very sizable. We also get tax duplication from the county that's very sizable. Any reduction in FTEs would reduce that subsidy to our city for police. So parsing out the department, uh, uh, you know, could, could certainly impact both of those subsidies to our public safety here in the community. But I, I will say that I, I just don't want folks to have the impression that but for performance measures, we don't have adequate information with which to judge the value of the police department. Uh, nothing can be further from the truth. We've got a tremendous amount of information and testimony from not, not just staff, but residents. I know there was a task force not so long ago that, uh, looked at the, uh, you know, these, these value questions and, you know, what do we, you know, what do we get for our investment? What kind of department do we want to have in this community? And I will just offer that as an invitation for the future as you commence your conversations about the FY27 budget, that we would be pleased to have an opportunity at your convenience or your request as a council to present that information to you as to just what is that value, both from a dollar standpoint and otherwise, of our police department here and the talented people that work in it.
Oh, yeah, I'll just, I don't want to derail, but the, when I, when I think about performance measures maybe more broadly to sort of to, to what Councilmember Hanzak was saying, things that attract people. Like, imagine if we had a metric that we did periodically, which was, uh, what hour of the evening where you live do you no longer feel safe walking in your neighborhood? You know, and we track that over time, and, and we set a target. We want everybody in every neighborhood to feel safe walking at eleven PM. You know? That would be something where it would be exciting to try to achieve a certain target and bring it up, and it would involve, say, you as the city manager, just coordinating a number of things around lighting, public works, you know, police department, excuse me, um, and bringing a lot of things together to, so that collectively we're trying to achieve a certain goal.
But one thing I will say, Councilmember Schlegel, you bring up a good point, but, um, you know, kind of bringing this back to the discussion about the budget, um, and, and definitely, um, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, when there were conversations about the, um, priority, um, I'm sorry, about the performance measurement work, um, one of the things that did come up was that there were some aspects of measurement that would require additional work. Maybe it would, and those, that work would cost. Maybe it would be new systems. Maybe it would be, um, doing a community-wide survey that is not just throwing something on the city website, but actually mailing things out and, and doing a very robust third-party survey of the community that would have give you the types of indicators that you just mentioned, right? And those things would cost money. So are you proposing that staff come back to us, um, with an update on the status of the performance measurement work and whether or not there are any budget needs for FY27 that the council should consider?
Y- yes, yes, I think it's been a while. I think it was in May that we had the last, uh, update, and it would be good for us to hear. And I, I think that also, now that I think about it, I hadn't, it's coming this, this evening, I would like it to be a priority that people feel safe walking at night in Tacoma Park. I think that would be, um, that feeling of personal safety would be something that I would love to see as a council priority for this year. And it, and it opens up all kinds of problem solving around how, how do you do that? How do you measure it? How do you improve it? What, I'm sorry, two things?
Oh, I see, never mind.
Yeah. So, personal safety, I don't, and it doesn't sound like a programmatic priority, but can we have priorities that are like more like vision statements? Like, we want a city, we want to prioritize a city where people feel safe walking at night.
I, I would encourage us if we're thinking about initiatives or we're thinking about priorities for the purpose of this exercise that we think money. What are the things that we would want staff to implement that we are willing to fund starting in July, you know, starting June of next year, right? Like, so, because this conversation is more about the budget and not necessarily, um, the prior, yeah. Um, but I think that what you're saying, you know, as it relates to how we ultimately are able to advance the, um, performance measurement work is important because it, it means that once we have a better update from staff around whether or not there are any financial needs in order to implement the performance measurement program, that those are brought to us for this budget year, or for FY27, because we want to make sure that folks have the resources that they need because we really want to see this, this get off the ground in the right way.
Mayor, if I could just comment a little bit on the Performance Management Expansion Program. So the, the study that we report, um, that was done by Metropolitan Strategies and Solutions at the end of last fiscal year, that designed the expansion, and its focus was organizational, and that was intentional. I think a lot of the conversation related to performance management, and I think the expressed desire for how they utilized their, at the program level. And getting granular data at a program level is a much more intensive effort than the city has committed to. And, and so the organizational aim is intended to tie or, or analyze council priorities and the city's effort towards those council priorities. So, um, high-level organizational, uh, intent as opposed to program-level, um, metrics that are likely to require, at least in the way that we're talking about it, um, which is trying to understand the effectiveness of any given program, rather than that be a short-term, uh, uh, output or input-related, uh, conversation. It's more of a long-term, uh, outcome and impact-related conversation. And the resources required to do that level of analysis, particularly for the type of programs that we typically have as a city, um, would be immense. Not only would it be, um, time-consuming and infrastructure intense, it would also be, um, very difficult to isolate those kind of impact and outcome-related measures from all the other things that impact the type of metrics that we will be trying to look at if we were trying to ascertain the effectiveness of any given program. And so as a, for instance, if you're looking at a, I'm going to make this up, if you're looking at a, a program intended to, uh, address toddler, uh, reading in the library, the effectiveness measure would be, uh, reading ability or reading efficiency. There's no way that we can say that our program is, is, is aiding in effectiveness. We can give you output numbers, we can tell you how many people attended, and we can tell you how much money was spent on that program, but that's not going to tell you how effective it was. And ultimately, I think what we're talking about at the programmatic level and the way that we're talking about it, or have been at least recently, is trying to, to do that and then decide whether or not the money is appropriately allocated or should we allocate it somewhere else? We can't do that. And so the alternative is really to look at it more broadly from an organizational perspective and say, generally, are we, are we putting money in places to achieve the city's overall goals? And that's what we are capable of doing, and that's what the program, at least its first phase, is intended to try to, uh, provide to council and staff.
Great, thank you very much. I, I do want to go back to one question I had for the group about staffing levels. You know, I, I want to be able to, we, we've said, you know, generally, um, the majority of council would like for us to maintain city services. In terms of staffing, are there thoughts or concerns around the number of FTE that are ultimately reported to us as part of the budget? Is there a maintain, reduce, expand? I, I just want to make sure that, because I know that we've talked about the ARPA positions, but, um, I want to make sure that I'm clear in terms of where people may, may be in terms of, of staffing. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Lammon?
You were, you were correct in pointing out at the meeting when we first started talking about the budget that those ARPA positions were intended to be temporary and I support you in pointing that out and in, and in trying to have those positions disappear as the funds disappear. And I just wanted to also flag that the original budget projection document that we saw also had the funding equivalent of the FTEs that are associated with the two positions that are county-based, which are for the, which were for the two council, councilors, the 300K that was in there for the two mental health practitioners who will be contracted to us from the county. Those are not listed as FTEs, but the cost of those was reflected in the original budget. So that would be another mechanism to potentially have the dollar amount of the budget be reduced without the FTEs being reduced. So I just wanted to also make sure that that's on our radar. But I do, I do think that it is appropriate for us to consider those ARPA, temporary ARPA positions to be appropriate for sunsetting.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Hansak shaking her hand. Okay. All right. Any other thoughts about that?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah. My, my thought is that I would not want to see the FTE number go up. I think that one of the reasons we have a great city management team is because you guys can think about whether there are positions to repurpose. And if, if, if there's a need in one area that you see, rather than just say, well, we're going to cut X because it was temporary. If you think, if you genuinely think that's more important, then where, where else would you, would you reshape the staff? But I would, ultimately, I would like to not see an increase in staff. And at some point, I'd like to get back to my two points.
Okay, okay. I promise you, we're going to get there.
I need to.
All right, because we, because we, we have to keep moving. All right. So, Councilmember, so, questions on the table now, still are any council priorities? I've heard stormwater, I've heard economic development, I've heard the performance measurement. Are there any other priorities or new initiatives related to services or programs that, that we want to discuss? Councilmember Hansak.
I just want to make sure that my point was clear earlier because it sounded like it was heard, you did say economic development just now, but for example, I would welcome ideas from the staff about perhaps consultancy on, on branding our city as a great place to live. Or I've noted lately, I picked up a couple magazines, the Bethesda, and there was like a Columbia, I don't know, some other kind of magazine that was out at my doctor's office. And all these cities are mentioned across, we aren't mentioned anywhere in any of these publications. It's notable. I wonder if we just had even 50% of a person working on branding our city in a different way, if we could really change the way we're seen. This goes back to that point, you might remember me talking about us being a democracy hub, whatever it is that we pick, but, you know, I wouldn't want to see us bring on a new FTE to do this because I don't think we have the luxury of that right now, but I would, I would be open to seeing something like that in the budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, so I just want to make sure that the, asking for an investment plan on electrification, on EV charging in vehicles is in, is on the list and want to make sure that a look at what resources we might need to tuck away because we might need them to serve federal, to serve residents affected by federal actions, partner immigration, those two things on the list. In addition, I thought about whether we need more on community engagement, but we have, we have tucked away some funds to, to do that. So I'm not making a proposal of that. And my last point, and I can write this all down and send it to you, send it to you if you would like, is that I think we're going to get a briefing in January on where we are on climate goals and I don't have a specific thing to put forward, but I don't know, do we do, do we, do we ask in addition to the EV electrification, do we ask that at that point if there are other additional budget needs to have them put out at that point? I don't know how to frame that one. We just had, we had a whole discussion earlier than tonight about, about climate needs and meeting our goals and, and we're going to have the staff come in, as I understood it was in January, and talk about where we are with that. So then, what's the question in the budget resolution, if there is one? I don't know.
I think the, yeah, I think the question in the budget resolution is how we describe that as a priority for staff to bring information back for the purpose of the budget. But I want to just make sure that everybody's clear. I don't want to introduce an entire line of work around not just our climate goals, all of the things that have been done, what are we doing to get there, council thoughts around what we need to do. I really would like for the discussion to be focused on a budget ask. So we can chat offline about how that can be structured in a way that doesn't lead staff to believe that they need to do three work sessions that will ultimately result in a resolution from council revising the climate framework because we're asking for, yeah.
That is not what I meant at all.
So, so as long as it is, you know, we can, we can chat about how it should be shaped in a way that makes it very clear that we're talking about something that is really directed towards the budget.
Well, the answer may be that electrifying our fleet is the number one thing we can do after, after community choice aggregation, which doesn't cost any money, but I don't know that yet because we haven't had the briefing. I'm guessing that's the answer and just leaving the window open in case there's a different answer. Does that make any sense at all?
Timing wise, the sustainability briefing comes before discussions about the fleet conversion plan and the inclusion of the EV infrastructure in the ERR. So you, I guess I'm saying that to set your expectations for what Mrs. Strata would be talking about in January, February timeline.
May I ask a question about this? So we're going to be taking our climate, to understand what will be in the briefing because that'll help me understand if this answers the question. We're going to be looking at the climate, the goals that we set and then the briefing will be how are we going, how are we doing in meeting the objectives that we set in the plan? Is that, is that essentially?
Generally, that's how it's structured.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it'll be both. I don't know if it's the same exact day, but it's around, it's intended to be around the same time and I don't know if it's January, February. But typically, the report from the sustainability manager is a progress report on goals versus kind of current, current stance.
Uh huh, okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Schlegel.
Related to transportation, I, I think a priority should be targeted moves to advance the transition of micro mobility, which includes bikes and scooters. It could be that there's specific spots where, or stretches that are discouraging people from doing that. Or it could be that the destinations don't have suitable space for locking up bikes and scooters. I feel like we could be on the cusp of making a real localism here where a lot of people can do a lot of their trips locally, which adds that virancy that, that we want. So I'd suggest that as a priority.
For, for the budget?
For the budget to, to identify, to ask staff to identify targeted, targeted moves that could encourage micro mobility. Now, the biggest, the biggest thing that could encourage micro mobility, we hopefully will know by April and that'll be whether we get the right to lower our speed limit. Because I think if we can lower our speed limit on some stretches, bikes are going to feel, many bikers will feel comfortable sharing the road. So that's, that's a huge, huge thing if that can go through. And in terms of other things, like I shared, this, this piece that I shared with you this afternoon, it is mainly about what we haven't gotten to yet about, about the rate we want to, you know, the property tax rate we want to like ask the, the manager to bring forward. When I'm looking right now, the only things that are like staffing-related, and I don't know, number four, I don't think is, but perhaps it's time to think about dropping the print newsletter. And if we did that, I don't, I don't think that would affect an FTE because we've migrated to other platforms. The other one was, I just don't know whether in this economic climate, is it, in terms of number 10, economic development, like should our, should, should our staff, and I don't know if this comes to FTEs, but should our economic development team be really just targeting key, certain Keystone properties that may be in transition? And does it make, does it make as much sense to be trying to promote or market development on a broad scale when the economy's in the situation it's in right now? Are we just waiting a year, so to speak, for Purple Line and other things to kick in?
Councilmember Wasson.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilmember Schlegel, since you brought up the newsletter, I, I guess I would like to better understand that, but my initial reaction is that that's a really important tool that we use to communicate with so many residents, which is already a theme and a thing we've talked about a lot, right? About making sure we're reaching people. So my initial reaction is like, no, we don't want to move towards moving everything online because I think the most, the people most likely to lose that transition are the folks we're trying to reach. So I, I'm thinking on that. But related to it, and I can't imagine it costs a lot, but I have, someone had mentioned once about how we, we have all our different streaming platforms and we have a channel, a TV channel, and I'd be very curious how much at all that's used and if there's any cost savings there because I think if someone is turning on a TV, they're streaming it through YouTube, they're streaming it from this or that and not through their cable company. But I could be wrong. I, I just don't know.
I'll just bounce back. Yeah, that's a really good point. I don't know about the TV, but on the newsletter, it's, I, I think there's super important value in printed stuff that people can pick up. I'm just wondering whether the thing we have that is like the Tacoma Park Users Guide or, or Recreation or Library Publications that can be found in many public areas and dropped rather than mailed, whether, whether those might be, certainly they can't be keeping people abreast of like, you know, ongoing council actions, but a lot of the things that are routinely published in the newsletter could maybe be sitting there on a rack like year-round for a little bit less money. That's all.
I think I would like to move us to the next point of discussion, if that's okay. I feel like I have enough here related to services. One of the things that I would like to add to the list for staff, and I haven't fully formulated my thoughts, but I feel like we're all tinkering around the edges trying to figure out where potential cuts could be. And I don't think that cuts per se around people or programs are really where we are. I think we're, we're stretched thin. I do though think that there may be some cost-saving measures or some efficiency, some efficiencies that could be identified by staff who are very familiar with how we do business. I would love to have some way for, for some proposal of cost-cutting measures and what some of the pros and cons might be for a council consideration, even if it's not something that could be implemented in FY27. I think that could be a really useful exercise for staff and useful for us to be able to see like, these are some of the potential things that we would recommend we could potentially cut. It may, you know, you step, residents may not like it, right? But it, we think that it could be a pretty efficient way for us to do business and save money. It's different from what stat, what residents might experience, but we think it could, it could work. And I think that that would be very beneficial for me, even if it was just two or three ideas that, that ultimately are presented to us as something to think about for, for future fiscal years.
Go right ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's an excellent point. And to that end, last year and this fall, I have once again invited the employees to actively assist us with ideas for cost efficiency, revenue generation, and any other operational recommendations they might have. I have last year and this year granted several hours of on-the-clock administrative time for them to gather in groups and put their ideas together. We are, matter of fact, last year I was able to, I had an award, a reward for those who participated. So, and I've re-upped that for this year. I know that the AFSCME union in particular has been very active last year and this year and we certainly open this up to any employees below the department head level. And so we're looking forward to finding exactly some of those kind of in-house ideas from folks who actually in the business of delivering the services and, and spending the funds that are allotted, they may have some of the best ideas. And certainly I'll say thank you in advance for the ideas that they're going to be generating for us.
Great. But I do think that it would be useful, you know, to kind of have some of those things come back for council, particularly if some of the reasons why they may not move forward is, oh, the residents may not like it or, you know, the like, you know? It, it might actually be useful for us to, to have some of those discussions.
Be glad to do that. Be glad to bring some ideas back to council.
Awesome. So I know it's late. Want to get into the tax rate, reserve rates. So based on the feedback of the council survey, it seemed as if there were, a majority of council members were in favor of keeping our general fund unaside reserve at the 17%. There was one council member that wanted to decrease the reserve, future borrowing to support capital projects. It, there was four council members that said keep it the same, one said decrease, two said increase, so I think that'll be useful to discuss. Funding for programs of potentially related personnel. It seemed that majority, five council members said keep it the same, one said decrease. The residential real property tax rate was a bit of a split. There were four council members that said keep it the same, three that said decrease. For the railroad and utility tax, there were four that said keep it the same, three that said increase. And then the commercial property tax, there were five that said keep it the same, one that said decrease, the other that said increase. And so based on these responses, you know, what thoughts do you have about tax rates, reserve rates and for inclusion in the city manager's budget? I really want to hear about property tax rate, the reserve rate, the utility and railroad tax and the commercial property tax. Councilmember Schlegel.
Well, if you could go back one slide, we are just as close as we could possibly be in terms of the splits on residential real property tax rate where it's, you know, keep the same or decrease, and then the railroad utilities at keep the same or increase. And, you know, I would, I wasn't so clear before going through this exercise that with, that I shared with you in this memo, that it does seem like there, simply by, simply by looking at the railroad tax, for example, number three, and, and going with the Kensington rate, we could, we could actually reduce our, our residential property tax rate. And there was all, you know, adding up all of these And there was all, you know, adding up all of these things, it seemed like there, there were a number of things that would not affect programs and related personnel that could be done, at least on a one-time basis here, that could, that could really enable us in this tough year for people to reduce the residential property tax rate. Now, I'm not the expert, but, but I think that it would be a good exercise to go ahead and ask for a constant yield rate so that, so that that would challenge the manager and, and staff to see which of these kinds of things could work, which of these creative things could work. So I'm not going to go through all this in detail, but I'll just say that, you know, on the, regarding this slide about tax rate, it does say, consider raising the railroad utility tax, consider decoupling commercial property tax for a few years so that it makes up for the money we've lost from not having an inventory tax for a while now. And then maybe consider adding a commercial occupancy license, which was an option that staff had looked at back when the old inventory tax was done away with. I think those are the three that relate to taxes, yeah.
Yeah. I, I will, I will jump in because I was one of the three in terms of the residential, the decrease of the residential real property tax. But my comment, which I'm not sure it was there, was my priority is making sure that the people who are hurting, actually, the people who are hurting the most actually get access to the relief. I am not convinced that a general decrease in the property tax, in the, in the residential property tax rate will provide support directly to the people who I believe may be feeling this the most. And so because of that, I said, eh, this is hard. I know that people are hurting. I know that there are homeowners, there are renters, there are businesses, there, everyone is hurting. I'm, I'm open to a discussion, but I am not convinced that the reduction, giving, giving property, single-family homeowners what could equate to a $50 decrease in their taxes. Is, is that the way that we actually help the people that are hurting? Or do we make sure that we're allocating the resources and bucketing the resources in a way that when people can't pay their mortgage, there's somewhere for them to go? And, and that's, that was the dilemma that I was trying to tackle in going through this. So I'm, I'm probably the odd person out because I said decrease because I was open to it, but not, as I was thinking about it, I'm like, I need more information because I want to make sure that I'm able to get resources to the people who are really going to be struggling based on what lies ahead. And I'm not exactly convinced that a, a universal decrease in the tax rate is the way to do it.
I definitely understand your point. And it's, it's so hard to have such a blunt instrument as a cross-the-board property tax rate. And so there's a huge question about how could we do means testing in an efficient and fair way and, and get people money back when they were below a certain threshold, you know? Like, it's a huge question for us as a city right now, especially with incomes and, incomes and, and home size is so bifurcated. So I totally understand where you're coming from. And, and, you know, me as a homeowner, I, you know, I want to support all the good things. I don't want to see my neighbors hurting and then moving away, you know? I'm not right at the point of, of needing to move away. Sometimes we talk about it, but yeah.
Yeah. And in terms of, I guess while I'm kind of talking through my thoughts, the general fund assigned reserve, I'm for keeping it at the 17%. In terms of future borrowing for capital projects, when I, I, I went towards the keep the same, but for me, the keep the same is paying off our debts and not necessarily adding more, at least in the short term.
Not the rate of future borrowing, but the amount of future borrowing.
Right. The, because this is, this was one table that was a little tricky for me and I wanted to like give a lot more context. The, we talked about the railroad and utility tax. For this one, I, I think I was in the keep it the same group because there are definitely conversations that are happening right now where Pepco is proposing to increase rates. And we are hearing firsthand that what they are in, in other counties where they've gone through this process of increasing rates, people are seeing substantial increases in terms of their utility bills. And so what I was not willing to commit to just yet is an increase in the railroad and utility tax rate, which could potentially trickle down to utility payers who are already about to potentially be hit by the Pepco rate increases. So that was my two cents on that. And then in terms of the commercial property tax rate, I am in a keep it the same bucket. And it's largely because, to Councilmember Hansak's original earlier point around economic development, one of the things that has always been challenging is the fact that our businesses are struggling. Any increase in taxes and things just trickle down to those business owners to pay. And so for, particularly in areas of our city, like the crossroads, where you have a lot more smaller businesses, I mean, it, I would be open to like, hey, if we have to charge an Aldi or somebody a little bit more, okay. But we have some smaller businesses that couldn't absorb an, an increase in a, in a, in a rent fee because of an increase in, in the commercial property tax. So that's just the, the dilemma for me in terms of the commercial property tax. Also wanting to make sure that we were not making a disincentive for, for folks to want to open businesses here because it would ultimately lead to some potential rent increases for businesses. Councilmember Westlake.
Thank you. Several of the things I was thinking you just raised, but I'll echo. I agree about the commercial property tax rate. I was, I'd be very concerned about increasing that just given how many businesses in Tacoma Park are small businesses and that they need a lot of support. And that is part of what makes Tacoma Park so special and unique. So I'm, I'd be worried about that one. The railroad and utility tax, we did increase in the last budget. So I, I, I had it at maintain, thinking that there was a reason that that new rate was proposed and let's give it some time at that point. And then for the residential property tax rate, I really agree with Mayor Cersei, a lot of your comments on this, about making sure that the folks that need it the most, the residents who need our help the most are getting help. So I, I too am, I'm really unsure if decreasing that is the way to get that to the folks who need it. But I have a, I guess a question for Councilmember Schlegel because I know, I know you want us to have, to recommend a constant yield rate, right? But what, what then are you thinking for the year after that and the year after that? Because it's one thing to say, hey, we want to keep our expenses the same, but then inflation, then, you know, like everything still goes up. So are you thinking this is like a one-time way to get us to pull it back a bit and then get back to like inflationary growth? Or, or, or no, you're hoping that we can keep it at that exact amount of money as long as, well, I don't know. I don't know how long. So that's my question.
Uh, go right ahead.
Yeah. First off, on the commercial rate, like, we're all clear, right, that, that a commercial property tax isn't based on the assessed value of the property, but it's on the, in, the receipts of the business in that year. Are we all clear on that? Is that in fact how it works? So that if your business isn't, isn't bringing in a lot of revenue, you wouldn't pay a lot of tax? Is, no? Is that, it's based on the assessed value of, say, the building?
Commercial property tax is based on the income of the property, not the, the leaseholder. So if, for instance, if BF Saul is being assessed, it's BF Saul's income, not, not Starbucks.
Okay. All right. But if you own the building, then it would be based on what you made, if you're like a landlord or something.
If you own the property, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for the clarification. What I think, Councilmember Westlake, I think where I am personally, and I, there may not be others who feel this way about it, but I see that we have, and I think properly, expanded the scope of our programs over the past 20 years in some specific areas. For example, adding a sustainability manager, you know? And, and I think that is wonderful. But I do see that even accounting for that, there's been an increase in our, in our costs way ahead of the rate of inflation for quite a while. And I do believe people who have said that they're feeling squeezed out of town because of that. And so like my initial thought is, let's just try to pause it for a year, just to signal to people that we, we're really trying to understand what's going on. And if we can find out more when we, we get additional metrics, we might be able to say, all right, we need to keep doing all this stuff because it's all the value added that we want. Or we might be finding out like, hmm, you know, we've got to find a more creative way to achieve these, these goals. So I don't know where things would go after one year, but if it were me personally, I'd be looking at, at a long trend that's way above the rate of inflation. And I'd be saying, well, let's take a few years and try to correct that back and, and see how it forces some, some hard choices.
One, to, to, to that point, so then you would be open to yo-yoing the tax rate, right? So you jump, you drop it to constant yield, which wouldn't account for inflation while you're studying. And then you come back and find out, actually, no, labor costs are higher than we expected. Utilities have gone up. We are subject to the same utility rate as Pepco. Our expenses have gone up and, and they're for core services. So then would you be open to rebounding the tax rate to higher than what it is now in order to adjust to receive the funds necessary to cover the prior fiscal year and the future fiscal year?
I mean, if we, as, as a democracy decided, we, we need to do all of these things and this is what it costs, and there's no more efficient way to do it, well, then yeah. But there's a lot of unanswered questions for me right now. So I don't, I don't see anything unvirtuous about yo-yoing if it turns out to be that. But I think that we owe it to the, we owe it to the residents to try to live within our means in any given year as much as we can.
I, I would encourage members of council to take a look at our tax rate history. What you will see is there's a trend. When the council lowers the tax rate, sometimes it's like, get down to constant yield, almost immediately the next year or the, or the following year, there has to be an increase, which increases beyond what the tax rate was prior to. And that kind of sets this big trajectory of like bigger, 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 because you have to recoup the costs that you were short from the prior fiscal year.
That, that would be true if you're doing a maintenance of effort. But what I'm, what I'm saying is, that I, I'm saying, let's, let's think about these next two years as a time when we really have to think hard about what are we choosing to do.
So, and, and one of the things that I would just encourage us to also keep in mind when, when residents are talking about constant yield, constant yield does not control for inflation. And we know, if you watch the news, we know that inflation is going up and that would mean, you know, the city would need to, and, and I, and I know we just went through, we went purposefully went through the conversation around services, right? So it would mean that the city would need to cut services or people. So either FY27 would have to have those proposals or definitely FY28. If you're going into a constant yield type budget, you need to be prepared to fire people. And, and I, I just want to, to make that point clear because that is, you know, in essence, what, what you are saying, City Manager Dispirito.
Yeah, that is not what I'm saying. I'm not saying we're firing people.
No, no, no. I'm not saying that that's what you're saying. I'm saying that establishing a constant yield rate at a time when you know inflation is increasing means that you are subjecting the future budget to a, a short, and you have to recoup the short. So it's either through cutting your major, some of your major cost items, so that's infrastructure, or people, because there's no other place in the budget to cut.
That's why I made this memo to show that these are one-time things.
But those are one-time. When you cut that rate, that is permanent. So then.
I don't, I don't have any authority to cut the rate on a permanent basis.
Well, well, we actually heard that during the, the forecast where they said, hey, remember when you cut one year, keep in mind that next year, you're going to have to recoup, right? So those are some of the things that we just have to keep in mind. Once you cut that tax rate.
Yeah, I'm keeping those in mind.
Yeah. You're going to have to perpetuate it. So you're either going to have to figure out how to cover those expenses in the next fiscal year or the year after. So I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to criticize the thought because the thought has been had many times and many councils and before, and, and councils have done it, right? But what has ultimately happened is when they cut it thinking it was that one-year thing, they eventually had to increase that rate later. And they had to increase that rate at a higher rate than it was before they dropped it to constant yield. And, and that was just because the inflation and the cost just kept increasing and they would then in a place of playing catch-up. Councilmember Lammon.
So it happens this year that if you were to adopt a constant yield plus COLA, Cost of Living Component on top of the constant yield, where you would come out, from what I understand it, based on the, the degree of inflation that, that has been adopted for the COLA for Social Security for the upcoming year, you would be at approximately the level of increase, not exactly, but approximately the level of increase in the tax, average tax assessment increase that Tacoma Park experienced. It would be not that different from holding the tax rate constant, not exactly slightly lower. But I would, myself, I would favor us taking that as a measured approach, which is a constant yield plus Cost of Living increase built into it for this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year. And the reason for that is that it would signal, an important signal to the taxpayers who do bear the burden, even if they are not the hardest hit in Tacoma Park, the taxpayers who do bear the burden, the homeowners who, who are the, who, who, the residential homeowners who bear the, the principal burden, and many of whom have lost their jobs, but their mortgages have not gone away, that their tax rate, their, their actual effective tax dollar amount will not be that much lower. But we are signaling to them that the assumption that their rate will stay the same, but, and the bills will continue to go up, that assumption is, has been halted. And we are looking at constant yield as the baseline with a sensible Cost of Living built in, because everyone understands that that's how we avoid the situation you were talking about, of putting the, the city in a, in a, trajectory that would leave us having to make up for lost time in meeting our obligations such as our, our, you know, debt service, et cetera. But it signals that we are, that we are putting the brakes on uncontrolled spending and we're planning ahead. And we're also, you know, meeting our obligations to consider inflation. So it, to my, to my mind, it would be basically splitting the difference between the, the two, the, the vote, the four vote and the three vote. vote and the three vote, and fall in a reasonable, balanced place that would make sense for fiscal 2027.
One of the things that I do think it's important for us to keep in mind is that we're talking about different inflationary indicators that are not the same. So Social Security is based on the Consumer Price Index, which is the cost of goods, household goods, and how they inflate over time. That is different from the inflationary indicators that local governments use. They use what's called the ECI, and that's based on salaries and for bundles of services. So those are different inflationary factors. So I do just want to, and they may have different numbers. So I do think that it is important for us to make sure that when we're suggesting inflationary factors, that we...
I recognize that that's not the same number. It happens to be the only number we have in hand today. We won't have the ECI number for some months yet, so I'm offering that up as a, not because I think it's the end number that we ought to use, but because I think it's indicative to a certain degree of where the ultimate number will be. I don't know how different they're going to be. Maybe you have a sense of how deeply they have deviated from one another in past years, but the COLA is what we have now as an indicator, and we do know something about the average increase in tax assessment in Tacoma Park, which I also recognize is a very varied figure. Some people, their assessments actually went down, not very many, but some people. So again, they're rough figures, but it's a way to, you know, as you said earlier, these are rough numbers, and they're not the final word, so.
City Manager Dispirito.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate this conversation. I do want to amplify what Madam Mayor just said with respect to what's the appropriate and realistic inflationary indices to use with respect. It's, you know, healthcare isn't that CPI. So healthcare insurance, utilities, that we have to, you know, water, sewer, electricity, things like that. Boy, I wish it was that low. A realistic adjustment, even if you just use last year's? My understanding, and we had this conversation with Raftellus, our professional financial consultants who presented recently and will again in January, about a constant yield plus the appropriate realistic COLA that would be necessary, because these are expenses we don't control. So we're hit with this inflationary impact in order to maintain. If you're also saying, in the same breath, you want to generally maintain your services, okay, then we're going to have inflationary impact we have to contend with. They told us that if you combine even constant yield with the realistic COLA, you're in excess of .55. You're going to actually, residents would actually pay a higher tax rate than what they do today.
Councilmember Hanzak, I see you like...
Yes. I'm going to take us off of just that, where we had just gone with that conversation quickly. I just want to go back and just emphasize, I am very much not a supporter of increasing the commercial property tax rate. Throughout the city, we have seen that a lot of our businesses are, you know, really struggle. We can't even keep businesses in our spaces. Many spaces have been empty for a number of years. And I have been told many different times that one of the reasons is that our tax rates are just a little bit higher, and you can just get a better yield if you're outside the city. So that, to me, that's exactly the opposite of what we should be aiming for, particularly right now, as we try to hold on to our businesses. But I also want to make an observation of this chart where we've looked at what we've all voted for on measures to achieve adequate funding to support services, is, you know, very few of us, myself included, have talked about ways to decrease taxes. So, I mean, it gets us back to, this is a hard thing to do. It's hard to want to cut anything. This is what we wonderful liberals do really well. And we're masters at it. And it's a problem, actually, for us too, as we see leaner times ahead. And so, you know, there are only a few ways that you can generate money out of air. You can at least keep paying the things that you're already, you know, doing, like taxing property, which is where we get a lot of our revenue. And the other way is you increase population, but then you need to have more housing, which we don't have yet, and we're not going to be able to build it quickly. Or you have economic development and wealthier people who have the ability to spend more or pay more, and then you can, then, maybe you can actually tax them more and increase something through some sort of bifurcated process or a graduated tax of some sort that puts a heavier tax on certain people more than others. But right now, it is actually, a lot of our wealthiest members of our city are those who are property owners. I know that a lot of people are seniors on a fixed income, but, and so honestly, I see this as a huge problem. I mean, it's like, we can't have our cake and eat it too. So we got to have economic development. We can't tax our businesses more, we won't have any businesses. And so if we want to meaningfully cut, we're going to have, we are going to have to cut services and personnel, and I think it is only right that we are pretty specific about what it is that we think we can live without, if that's what we think we need to do. And we, that's a tough conversation to have. I'm not ready to have that myself. Thanks.
And I do just want to remind folks that we can debate this for the next few months, when we are talking about the budget. But what I'm hoping we can do tonight is to get to the point where we could say, hey, staff, this is where we want you to start us off when we are having this discussion. And given the task at hand, I'm inclined to say that I am fine with us being presented with a property tax rate that is the same, and then having these types of continued debates, you know, over the next few months. I will say, I apologize. I've lived through this conversation a couple times, and I have. I remember, I don't know, Councilmember DeBala, if you remember, the ECI CPI debate of what, 2018, 2017? You know, and so it is important for us to go, to have the conversation. I just think that it is, you know, and we will have the conversation. I just think that it's important for us to give ourselves time over the next few months to have that debate, but what we're questioning right now is what we want staff to present to us in terms of the upcoming budget.
May I offer a few words of encouragement to my colleague, who I really appreciate that you put together this memo? It reminds me a lot of what I did in my first year on council that, and so you do have several months to lobby the rest of us, first of all. And what I did, I created an intricate spreadsheet with costs literally like 20,000, 30,000, et cetera, that you can cut, and then you vote on each item. And I had a target tax rate that I wanted us to get to, and we got to it. We actually got to it. So it is possible, if, you know, maybe not at this, if you're not, if you're outvoted tonight, if you are, I'm just, I'm just being really candid, because I was really focused on getting us to a lower tax rate in my first year, and it was hard. But anyway, but it required a lot of different negotiations, so.
Right, yeah. And I mean, I was doing these kinds of budget games. I helped Bruce Williams do one like in 2010, so, you know, it goes back with me. What, Mayor, seriously, you said hours ago now, let's be clear, that this resolution does not set a tax rate. So I just want to make sure you all understand that in the second paragraph of this memo, it says, third sentence, finally, it would, setting a, asking for a constant yield proposal from you, Manager Dispirito, would lead to a draft budget that delineates for us what it would take away to reach constant yield while maintaining whatever priorities we set. I think what I'm asking for is that we ask for that low option because that spurs us into a much more fruitful discussion as a group of seven people about, wow, that, like, what if we say, wow, now that really hurts, you know? Where do we go from there? Like, I felt, I felt last year, on my first year, it was a lot harder to talk about removing things from the draft budget. And what I'm talking about is a situation where we might say, okay, you gave us this, now let's think creatively about what we need to add to make sure we're meeting needs, you know? And then maybe we end up somewhere, somewhere in the middle from there. I just think that by asking for constant yield upfront, and I don't want to sound manipulative, but I think, I think it's a fun way to play the game, because then you have to, you come back with like, okay, all right, you want me to cut it to the bone? Let me see what I can do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't want to play a game with the budget. I just want, I want to do the budget.
It is, but when you learn it in school, it is called, it's called a budget game, you know? I'm not trying to make light of it.
City Manager Dispirito.
Yeah, well, one thing is certainly, in working, continuing to work with Raftellus, our consultant, we'll continue to bring, and I think we can bring scenarios, you know, in terms of, okay, this is what the revenue will generate, this is what the expenditures... It ultimately is tied to what do you want as a deliverable? And bringing, it would be, it would be frankly impossible to bring a constant yield budget with a statement that says at the same time, don't alter services. Okay, so that would be, in essence, in my mind, contradictory direction? You know, we can provide, if ultimately, and first and foremost, council, you know, wants to continue to provide the services that the residents need and desire, that they value, then I will present a balanced budget that reflects how to get there. It is not, and I'll say for the record, my intention to, this past two years, nor next year, to increase the tax rate. Okay? That is not my goal for FY27, not to increase it. But that would be three years in a row that the rate didn't go up. And yes, I understand that that's still more out of folks' pockets based on the assessment and evaluations, I get that. But giving my staff and I the margin to work, you know, with that, and, you know, still show you scenarios for, okay, if you want to see what, how much constant yield buys you, so to speak, and what the potential impact might be on services, you know, there's some analysis that we could do. Doing a full-blown budget proposal, we really can't do more than one. It's a heavy lift just to do one. With direction to at least not exceed the current rate, that gives us a lot of latitude to still find efficiencies, because we're going to need them in the face of inflation, in the face of cost expenditures beyond our control. It's, believe me, it's going to be that budget trick, just to be able to balance the budget with the current rate, given services are the same. So, but I'm just offering some hope with respect to, informationally, we can continue to try and bring some analysis to the council, particularly as we get more specific information, harder information about, you know, in the coming months, about revenues. The mayor had alluded to confirmation on things like tax do, and we also get HUR money from the state highway user money. We get the SAP grants, that's the supplemental appropriation for police programs, and other types of revenue. We have some that declines, but we don't know how much for sure. And so we'll, maybe like cable. And there's also the red light and stop sign camera, where we'll have some, I'll say it now, very conservative estimates about additional revenue generated by that. But all of these are things that we don't have the data for right now, that we can ultimately bring, but would work within the parameters of a don't change the rate scenario.
Thank you. Councilmember DeBala.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that, because I was wondering about that, whether we had this information yet on the constant yield, et cetera. Councilmember Schlegel, I appreciate the list, and I look forward to talking about some of the details, and not sure I understand them all. But the overall point of what rate we assume, we ask the city manager to assume in putting together a budget, what stuck with me, one of the things that stuck with me out of the Raftellus projections, and other people have said this, is if you drop the rate now, you got to turn right around and raise it. And I don't want to do that. That seems unfair to people, to be doing that. A more consistent, this is what we've got, this is, that makes more sense to me. Plus, my gut was saying to me, what I just heard the city manager confirm, that saying we want a constant yield tax rate, or even a constant yield plus inflation, some inflation factor that's not ECI, is going to result, is going to conflict with the other direction of maintaining services generally. So I'm in the, let's ask for a current tax rate assumption. I have another question besides some of the ones you just answered. I am under the perhaps mistaken impression that when the city goes to advertise for... Uh-oh, you're looking at me because you know what the question is. Or you're just tired. I'm sorry. When you go to, when the city goes to advertise for the public hearing, and there has to be a rate that's advertised, my impression is that that has to be the rate, the highest rate it could go. So if we ask for a city, if we ask for a constant yield budget, we get a proposed constant yield budget, we advertise a public hearing for a constant yield tax rate budget, can we then legally go up from that? Because I am under the, somehow, the impression...
It was my understanding, and definitely correct me if I'm wrong, that the only reason why we need a public hearing is if we are proposing a budget that is above constant yield. At least that used to be the law, but I know that they were talking about, they changed it, and so now I'm not exactly sure what the new law is.
So if we have a constant yield proposal, and we have a hearing on the proposal, and then we raise it because we don't want to lay people off, I mean, that doesn't make sense either.
It used to be that you, anytime you...
I know what it used to be.
Yeah, it used to be anytime you were, even if it was a consistent, constant tax rate, if it was greater than a constant yield, then you had to have a public hearing. Now, I think, I think, Mayor, I think you're right. I think that changed last year, and I believe now you have to hold a public hearing anytime you change the tax rate.
Right. Anytime you change the tax rate.
Change the rate. No, raise the rate, not, not...
Raise the rate, yes.
Well, I would, yeah, I would appreciate clarification. But, so that's a question I have that I'd like some clarification on. I still think that at some point, we need to bite the bullet on the commercial property tax rate, but I hear you all that maybe this is not the time. I lean slightly to, yeah, we did just raise the railroad and utility tax rate, and I'm open to considering it, but I'd first like to hear, did we get any feedback on it from the utilities, from the railroads? Did we see an impact? I don't even know. So maybe I have a question about that rather than a direction. And, and yes, I understand that the cost of local government rises over time, has been rising faster than low, than consumer inflation, and that does make it challenging. And I don't want to make it more challenging by then dropping to a constant yield rate, which will almost certainly... Let me rephrase that. Services in this city are largely people, people with jobs, people who, if they were listening to the conversation, might be feeling not so great right now, and I don't, I'm not prepared to go there right now.
Yeah, people equate to services.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Westlake?
Thank you, and I'm probably going to be too direct because it's late. I don't see how we can really think about a lower tax rate unless we're also talking about cutting programs. about cutting programs, not one-offs, not this and that, cutting around the edges. It would have to be, we will no longer do this thing, because otherwise, it just, it just doesn't add up. So, I'm not particularly interested in that, I have maintained for everything. But I'm open to those conversations, if people have ideas about this is the program that I think we would or should cut when budget time comes around. But unless it's that, unless it's literally, we will not do this thing anymore that we do every single year, I don't see any way that we can change our tax rate. I just don't. And also, because it is late, I'm going to not move, or I don't know what, but this, I mean, a majority for all of these said maintain, so I would think that's what we should put in the budget priority of resolution.
Okay, thank you for that.
I did have one more thing.
Councilmember Landman.
So, the Raftellus analysis did not consider any scenarios in which, in which there were any attempts to reduce expenses, they only considered changes in revenue. So, I don't really, it was only part of, they didn't really look at the full scenarios, full opportunities to consider all scenarios, and I think that, that's not what they were asked to do, but I don't think it gave us a full panoply of ideas. We do spend, I mean, personnel is a big piece of what we do, but there are a lot of brick and mortar expenditures in our city. The decisions have been made and continue to be made to spend a lot of money on stuff. And, you know, over the past year, proposals have been made to spend more judiciously on stuff. And those, those opportunities to spend less on stuff continue, will last into the future. Capital spending is a big piece of what we do, and including debt service and so forth over the years, bonds that last 20 years, that we pay for over 20 years, and we pay capital, and we pay interest on those. So, I would respectfully disagree that it's only about personnel, and I do think there are other ways to save money, including the way we buy vehicles and everything else. There's always opportunities to save there. But I would also like to say that it cannot, both be, both things cannot be true, that constant yield plus ECI might actually be more than leaving the tax rate the same, and that leaving the tax rate the same is, you know, like, if indeed, it could potentially be higher tax bill to have constant yield plus ECI, then I'm not exactly sure what the objection is to that concept. I think at least, if we say to our taxpayers, we are trying to have a tax base based upon constant yield, but we are building in a safety net for inflation, so that we don't fall behind in meeting our obligations to cover healthcare, to cover, you know, inflation generally, to cover the costs of paying our personnel, what their union contracts require, we are at least still sending a signal to them that we are, that we are not intending to have the tax bill go higher. I still think it would be, I would rather have us say that our taxes would be the current rate or constant yield plus ECI, whichever is lower. That's what I'd like to see. I think that would indicate an intention on our part to try and not have the assumption be that whatever, you know, the tax rate turn, you know, produces, will be fine with us. I don't know how you feel about that, but that, I think, would be, that would, you know, take into consideration the point that the city manager appropriately made, which is that the ECI might be a lot more than the COLA.
In 2024, the ECI was 3.9%, I believe, and the COLA was 2.4. So.
That would, you know, still be less than, you know, the, it could potentially still be less than the tax rate, allowing, you know, rates to just simply continue to go up based upon the tax, property tax assessments.
One thing I will just want to just chime in and say, and I. I think I have enough to put pen to paper. I know you all may not think I do, but I think I do. The, the point that was raised about people and capital, I say all the time, our budget is people and concrete and asphalt. And what was brought up during the Raftellus presentation, Darrell has taught me, I've learned, the bigger thing is that, and what was brought up by Raftellus is, for many of these capital-related things, I know that there may be some debate on whether or not we should do things like build a library or the like, but at the end of the day, our buildings have a lifespan, our roads have a lifespan, and whether you want to pay for them today and delay it till next five years from now, the end result is typically the cost associated with those things, they still have to happen, and the cost associated with them increase with time. And so, that was the point that was stressed during the presentation, and that is why they said, hey, you all really do need to be planning ahead in terms of your reserves, and in terms of how you are spending your money, to be prepared for the growing increase in terms of your capital budget. So I just want to say that piece, and I know that people are fading. Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, on the memo that I did here, that there wasn't, there wasn't anything in here other than the very modest question about economic development that involved doing anything to personnel at all. So, this was looking for other possibilities. It also wasn't touching any of the assigned reserves that we still haven't dipped into at all, and we're about halfway through the fiscal year. So, hopefully, we still have a bunch of those extra contingency assigned reserves that we're looking at. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, I hear you, Councilmember Westle, that you feel like we are, we are at the very, at the very edge here, and like, any cuts we would make would be cutting people or programs. But I feel that, no, we're not quite at the very edge, we do have some things we could do that would be lasting adjustments in accounting approaches, assuming that, for example, just assuming the execution rate for capital projects, as we did this year, an execution rate for personnel, that would be a way to adjust the budget downward.
Thank you. Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, just very quickly, to the point of helping the people who need the most help. Somebody, please remind me when we are going to hear a briefing about the property tax rebates for, that expand the low-income, low-income property tax.
Should be in January, the homeowner credit, homeowner property tax credit program.
But that's an example of looking at the, targeting the people who need the help, and I'm open to talking about other kinds of targeting with anybody who wants to. But I, I'm uncomfortable with dropping it, knowing that we're just going to have to pick it back up again.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Councilmember Westle.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I guess especially to Councilmember Landman, that my point was not that we need to reduce people, we would have to cut out programs. And I'm a grown-up, and I know that that means staff. But the point is, we're not going to do this thing for our residents anymore. And something like that is the only way you can make a meaningful dent in the budget. So, that's what I'm saying. We would have to say, we're willing to go without this, and it means that there might be staff to get cut, because that's what their job is, right? But that's, to me, is like, if we're not talking about that, then it's, it's just trimming around the edges, and it would lead to the, next year, we just jack it right back up, because it costs so much to do all the services that we do and we like, and our residents like, and our residents want, and our residents rely on.
All right. Well, it's 11:45. We've been going since 6:30, and some of us have been going since 4:30. I've had no dinner. My contacts have been in my face since 7:00 AM. It's been a long day. But I appreciate the conversation that we've had. I know that this is something that we're going to be debating for many months, but I do believe that I have what I need to kind of put pen to paper on an initial draft for a budget resolution. If after tonight, you all have had any thoughts around the items that you had proposed, and you want to send me some language, please feel free to do so. Thank you very much. And so, my hope is to get something to you all by the weekend. I'm committed to making sure folks have something by the weekend, so that, because I want us to be able to have a meaningful discussion and an informed discussion next week when we are working on the vote. All right, so, everybody have a great night, all right? Meetings adjourned.